Hi, everybody. Is my microphone working?
Yes.
Good. And I think it's okay.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Hi.
Just going to wait till we have the other board members joining us. Nice to see faculty with us this evening.
These are wonderful math committee members.
Welcome. Folks are just coming over from another meeting, so I'm going to give them another moment.
Looks like we have some younger faculty here.
It's just after 7:30. We're waiting for a few more board members and for Dr. Henning Piedmont to join us. But you are in the right place. This is the Board of Education meeting. All right. I see Dr. Henning Piedmont has joined us, and I'm just looking to see if our board is here. It appears that way. I believe Jody Meyer will not be present this evening. We have many illustrious guests this evening, faculty members, other administrators and students. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. It was open previously at 6:30 before we went into executive session. Tonight is Monday, February 22, 2021. This is our regular board meeting. So with that, Dr. Henning Piedmont, do you have any announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you so much. I apologize for that delay. I was having trouble entering. So just a few comments, and then I'd like to reserve a few minutes for Drew Wendell, to our Director of Physical Education Health and Athletics, to just sort of frame the board resolution that up for the board's consideration with regards to the other set of high-risk athletic sports that are up in the next month, actually, next month, in the coming months. So in a few minutes, if you don't mind, I'd like for him to be able to share some of his thinking about that resolution, rather than having to wait until we get to that particular board agenda item. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank Adam Oppenheimer and Melissa Shandroff, who will be with us shortly, and Adam is one of our esteemed science scholars, who's going to talk about some of his research. So I'd like to thank them in advance and thank Ms. Shandroff for her leadership, as well as Mr. Adi Pietro and Miss Hardesy in terms of their support for, you know, having such a magnificent science education program. I'd also like to thank the members of the math committee who've been working with Melissa Samansky. They will have a presentation shortly, which will help you to see the timeline of the work that they've been engaged in and the continuation of that work. So you'll get a preview of what they've been doing to date. I'd also like to just remind the community, as well as our faculty and staff, about our March 4th school reopening committee. We will meet on that date from 4:30 to 5:30. As you know, there are some new CDC guidelines in thinking, and certainly the effort to make sure that we put into place all things that are necessary to maintain safety and well-being and health of all of our students, faculty and staff, and in terms of the reinstatement of all students returning to school for five days. So that conversation will take place, and a link was shared Friday before the start of our midweek, our midwinter recess, and that link will be shared again this Friday. It was shared with faculty and staff today, again, to encourage as many faculty and staff members to sign up as possible, so that their thoughts and their concerns are part of the discussion and decision-making that takes place. The thinking across the region is that districts are looking at either returning fully, if that, you know, of all the sort of boxes are checked with regards to safety measures, and our new understandings from the CDC and our New York State guidance that we originally received, either returning before the start of the spring break or afterwards. So that's sort of the broad sort of timeline. I'd like to congratulate in advance Gina Vela Via, who's a surrogate middle school special educator, whose tenure recommendation is on our board agenda. She's a fine educator, and it's wonderful when we have these opportunities to make a recommendation for tenure to our Board of Education. So just a pre-congratulations to Gina. I'd also like to thank our county executive George Latimer for continuously advocating for all school personnel to obtain a vaccination, if they desire to have one. In terms of just some of the data in our district, we have 270 faculty and staff members. That's in every position in the district, and 23% of them are waiting for their first shot. And it's not because these individuals have not been diligently engaged in trying to obtain, you know, registration for a vaccination, but, you know, even just this last week, as an example of how a disruption, whether it's, you know, Mother Nature or something else, that or, you know, short supply of the vaccine, you know, can, you know, turn back the clock for people, that they have to then be postponed or rescheduled. And that's happened in a couple of instances where people on, you know, not only their second attempt at a vaccination, but potentially having to be postponed is another time. But that's just the information as of today. I'd also like to share that we still have a very healthy remote instruction, you know, participation rate. These are our families, our children, who are learning exclusively at home. So at Hillside, it's about 8% of the population as of today, and this, you know, can change from week to week. At Farragut, it's 60%. And at Hastings High School, it's 51%. And these are the children who are learning 100% remote. And as you know, we've extended the remote-only option to our hybrid families until February 26. Certainly, all indications would lead us to conclude that that would be extended further. That is what other districts are doing, and as far as we know, that consideration will be something that, you know, districts are going to exercise as long as that option is available for families who, for their, you know, for reasons related to their child's health, you know, do not want to have their children attend in-person learning as of yet. And I'd also like to thank Jason Plastner, who's our media and public relations specialist for the wonderful stories he's been writing for the Hastings happenings. I'd like to think I'll thank all our faculty, staff, and our administrators, who have been emailing him, you know, suggestions and recommendations as they, as, you know, information that they're proud about, you know, to have that him interview, you know, the various participants, whether it's the, you know, students or it's faculty or staff, parents. It's really wonderful, so I want to thank him. And actually, he was interviewing at 5 o'clock the very famous Super Bowl Tampa Bay former high school graduate. And so that should be pretty exciting, you know, when that story is written. So, you know, it's hard to sort of maintain your sort of calm, you know, when you hear about that, you know, that that's something that our students are going to be really excited to read about. And just a few other announcements that are on our agenda. On Wednesday, our policy committee will be meeting at 3 o'clock. On Thursday, the 25th, the district-wide IEP review will take place at 7:30. On Friday, the 26th, the Farragut Middle School 7th and 8th grade have one act plays starting at 7:00. On Tuesday, March 2nd, an author, Richard Blanco, will be visiting, and that's at 8:00 a.m. On Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 3rd, there's a superintendent's and PTSA and SEP to chat that starts at 4:30. On Tuesday, March 9th, the board, the student board liaison, which is a group of students who represent the student government at the high school, will be meeting with several board members and our high school leadership team, Moses Samansky and myself, at 7:30 a.m. That's always a wonderful way to hear them talk about the experiences that their classmates are having and other insights that they share, which is always valuable. On Wednesday, March 10th, we have our monthly time to talk about social justice and racism with students. This is a free, a safe space for students, along with Tessa Stewart, Jeanette Coker, Melissa Samansky, and myself, and any students who would like to participate, and that's at 3:15. Those have been really awesome conversations to have with students, to have them have just a space to have, you know, to talk about things that they're thinking about, they're reading, that they're hearing about, and then having us, you know, there to listen and to help, you know, engage in that sort of thinking with them. And on Wednesday, March 10th, the finance committee is meeting at 5:00 p.m. And finally, on Wednesday, March 10th, again, the Farragut PTSA meeting takes place at 6:30 p.m. And then I'd like to now turn the rest of my comments over to Mr. Drew Wendell. Thank you so much, Drew, for being here.
Thank you, Valerie. Hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. I want to thank you in advance for your consideration for approving the resolution for participation in the following fall season two and spring high-risk sports. Varsity and modified football, varsity JV and modified volleyball, and varsity and JV and modified boys lacrosse. I could speak on behalf of the student athletes and their families and coaching staff and athletic staff and community members that they are truly grateful for the opportunity to be playing this current season and excited for the upcoming fall season two and spring athletic seasons. Although there have been two mandated 10-day pauses for two of our sports programs, those cases are not a result of the participation of athletics, but from outside contact, which is out of the school's control. That being said, I feel our COVID protocols are working and providing a safe environment for everyone involved. Everyone has been on board with following the rules and being careful, because they know they have to, they have to be in order to stay safe and continue with their season. We will continue to follow the same protocols for the fall season two and spring seasons and make any adjustments if needed to make sure we provide a rewarding and safe program for everyone involved. I thank you, and I'm hoping that we can get this going. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wendell. Do any board members have questions regarding the resolution that we will be voting on in the business section of our meeting upcoming?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Drew. I appreciate you bringing this. Can you just, I know we emailed a little bit about this last week, a couple of weeks ago. Can you just bring the board up to date on how different districts are approaching rapid testing? I know some are thinking about, you know, you know, right before, right after, doing rapid tests, so that maybe it doesn't keep people, but at least people are alerted pretty quickly that someone may have been exposed or someone may have COVID. I know that you had shared, you know, some thoughts about that and, you know, some, you just have, you have more information than I think the rest of us do on how different districts are approaching that, and Valerie, you may have some of that, too. I know that both of you were working together. Can you just bring the board up on how different districts are approaching that and what our thoughts are on that?
Okay. Well, some of the districts are looking into doing it still. I haven't really heard much about doing any testing at this point. The problem with the rapid test, they're not totally reliable and accurate at this time. We consulted with our medical director, and she advises at this time that it's not really the way to go with athletics, especially with some schools doing it and some schools not. So we went on the advice from our medical director for now and to see if we needed to do any testing.
The other issue that Drew and I've talked about, you know, which was, you know, was a communication that was issued last week from the New York State Department of Education, is that they, you know, some districts were, you know, using the surveillance test, you know, to make decisions that impacted whether students could be in school. And that's, you know, certainly a, not a pathway that, you know, you know, we would ever consider. So, you know, there was some pretty strong language, you know, that was shared with school districts from the state department about making sure that those tests should not be tests that only focus on athletes. So that, this is a new development as of last week, and Drew and I saw two different versions of that memo. You know, one, the second one was stronger with regards to making it very clear that, you know, districts really should not be targeting athletes. You know, if there was, you know, these tasks, these Bynax tests that were used, that were purchased initially to support the governor's microcluster initiative, which was the, you know, the yellow, red, and orange zoning, you know, to, you know, on the basis of the levels or the percentage of infection in a particular geographical area that the school district was in, could trigger that school district needing to go into one of those zones. So we were prepping for the yellow microcluster, which, you know, districts were told they should be preparing for. So while we have a process for administering the Bynax test, which, you know, was the objective, that Bynax test was never, you know, intended to be used, you know, to screen athletes only. And for us to take it now and to use it for that purpose, to determine whether, you know, an athlete, you know, may be asymptomatic, is not consistent with how the whole sort of, you know, Bynax testing program. So, you know, there are districts that, you know, have been using it before, you know, and it wasn't, you know, just focused on athletes. But, you know, if we chose to use that, which I'm not, Drew and I are not recommending because of the feedback we've gotten from our medical director, that's supported, you know, by others who've shared the same statistics about the low reliability of the test, whether you're testing positive or negative. Mostly, I mean, the biggest issues are testing negative. The, you know, is the fact that, you know, we would have to really make sure that, you know, we're testing 10% of the population and not just the 10% that, you know, and only, you know, as I said, exclusively looking at the athletes. So this was the latest information, and thank you, you know, thank you, Mr. Sunheim, for asking that question, because it does allow us to share, you know, updated information that further supports our point of not, you know, wanting to engage in, you know, surveillance testing of athletes only.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding the resolution from board members?
I just had a follow-up question about double masking. I know that the CDC is now recommending that as a way to lessen spread to double mask. Maybe make it just impossible to breathe during exercise, so I don't know. But I was just wondering if that's come up at all.
I haven't heard any school district doing that for athletics at this point, because it is difficult to breathe with a mask and participate as, you know, they have to wear it the whole time while they're playing, and it's been, you know, it's hard for them to get used to. So a double mask is, it would be, would make it really difficult for the athletes to play in at this time. And nervous that they would have problems breathing is a concern that we have already with athletes doing it. So we've been training with the one mask for, since the beginning, and with the shortened season, I don't think we, the team would be ready for that at this time.
And there's been no guidance from New York State to shift from our existing mask protocol. So, you know, the CDC recommended the types of masks that can be worn, and so that's what we are continuously reinforcing and monitoring. But there's been no, you know, you know, direction from the New York State Department of Health telling districts that they should institute a double mask protocol. Thank you, Mr. Wendell.
No problem. Thank you.
Are there comments from Ms. Samansky or Ms. Carvalho?
Evening, everyone. I'll be reserving my comments for the presentation this evening.
Great. Thank you.
And I'll be doing the same when I provide the update on the Capitol later this evening. Thank you.
Great.
Ask Valerie a couple points of questions?
I'm sorry?
Could I ask some questions about Valerie's comments? Or should I? Well, later on that one.
What, what was this regarding the, the resolution?
No, not the sports resolution, just two of the points that were just shared with the public there.
Was this regarding the school reopening information that Valerie shared with us? Yes, you have two questions. You can go ahead.
Thank you very much. Valerie, you said 23% of the staff is waiting for its first shot. Could, could we imply then that 77% of our staff has already received the first shot? Or is it more that we have some teachers who've shared that they're not planning on getting the shot at all? Were the, the number 23% waiting? Do we have any teachers who've also shared they're not actually getting the shot? Or are we already at three quarters of our staff has received its first shot?
Sure. The question that we were asked to investigate was in terms of providing this, this particular number to the county executive was how many people who, how many people have not gotten their first shot? So some of these people are waiting, you know, they could be, you know, they could be scheduled for next month. But the question was, you know, how many have not? Because the, the objective was to try to figure out how to make the vaccine available to school personnel more, sort of more easily and more quickly. So that was the basis of wanting to, for asking the question in that matter, how many people still have not received their first shot? So we have not asked, nor, you know, are we at this point, you know, necessarily going down that pathway of asking who plans not to that, that stay, you know, that's, that's a, an issue that, that the, you know, we are not, you know, entertaining at this, at this point in time. But we are, you know, trying to make sure that we learn how many are waiting. And maybe the time, the schedule that they do have can be expedited. You know, we, we have heard that, I guess it was the week before the break, a few school districts. Irvington was one of them, might have been White Plains and Tarrytown where the health department did notify the districts that there were a certain number of spots available for the, for the faculty and staff who were awaiting their first shot. So this information, you know, is being sort of factored into potentially trying to make available more opportunities that are specific to, to certain school districts or school districts in the region. Not that that may happen totally. It may be a matter of, of more vaccines being made available at the Westchester County Center, you know, when they're, you know, at some point in time or some designated location. But that's the purpose for, for districts being asked for that information.
Thank you. So it's, so we're not able to assume that 77% of the staff has received the first shot is what I took from that. Thank you. Another point, you said about 60% of Farragut Middle School is now choosing to be all remote. Do we have any thoughts or plans on whether that's a number that allows the 40% of students to come in five days a week? It seems like we've had way more than 40% of students trying to be in attendance. I think we are at about 80% before. Are we close to a number or are we close to planning? If we're at the only 40% of students who want to come to school, is that the one way we can go to five day a week school for FMS? It sounds like that puts us really close to being able to handle those parents preferences.
Sure, that's, that's a really good question. So I want to thank Lui de Pietro and Jennifer Sporelli in advance for having prepared a survey to ask that, to ascertain that very information from parents. You know, how many parents would, you know, if, you know, if, because of the reduced numbers of students who are present for in-person learning would opt for, opt to come in five days a week. So they have that information and the building leadership team along with Kevin Hammond at Farragut, as well as Melissa Hardisty at Hastings High School, will be looking at that information and making, you know, working with the families to be able to make those decisions about how many people, how many students are interested in coming in five days a week and in making, and being able to work with the families, you know, as soon as possible. So that is definitely underway.
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like if our average class size is about 25, we're looking at about 10 students per class, although it's not going to be perfectly spread out. And I know that our classrooms have been holding more than 10 students already. So I hope, hope we see, we find out if that's something that's doable or not.
Absolutely. Yes, they have that, that information and they will be working through that. And I'm sure we'll hear very shortly about, you know, how many families have opted to have their children participate. And, you know, and, and also ensuring that there's commitment that, you know, we don't have, you know, children who may be bouncing back and forth because that will impact the numbers, you know, if they're, you know, if, you know, if students who are learning remote decide that, you know, on any particular day during the week, they want to come in, you know, that could be, you know, probably a little challenging to kind of manage. But they, they have the information and will be working through that and making decision and, you know, about how many students can come in five days a week.
Thank you, Jeremy Gallin, for those clarifying questions and for answering them, Valerie. And I just want to share, I know I received a notice from our state Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins that there's a new vaccination site that's being opened in Yonkers starting next week. And they're prioritizing certain zip codes. Then, then also three days later prioritizing educators and others that qualify. So hopefully with that center coming online, some of these faculty members that are still waiting can get pushed toward the front. So I know that it's been a long time coming. Sabine, and I think I saw. Hi, Sophia. Nice to see you both.
Hi, everyone. I hope everyone enjoyed their February break. Most people that I talked to in school today said that their break was very relaxing, but at the same time, very quick. In other news, students are beginning to figure out what courses they want to take next year. The band and the orchestra are currently in the process of creating recordings of their pieces. And these recordings have become a new final product for ensemble members since they currently cannot have events like concerts and competitions, et cetera. The Spring Musical has an interest meeting this week. And lastly, the affinity group has opened up submissions for a mural surrounding the theme of multiculturalism. That's it for me now. Sophia is going to say a couple of words.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. So this is adding on to what Mr. Gallin and Dr. Henning Piedmont were just talking about. Lately, the school building has practically been empty. I know according to like official numbers, 50% of high schoolers are in. But I know from being in school, 50% of high schoolers are not in. One student said to me, this is a quote, that it's more isolating to be in person than at home. Students aren't coming to school because they don't want to eat lunch by themselves. Also, it's really hard to engage in class discussion when you're one of the only students at home. When there are 20 students, I mean, when you're one of the only students in school, when there are like 20 students at home. People are choosing on a daily basis. And of course, like, no one wants to wake up in the morning. If you have a test and you can stay home, why would you want to go to school? At the very beginning of the school year, when clap, like people's friends were in the building, going to school was fun. It's not that fun anymore to be the only one in a class. And lastly, I'd like to express my extreme disappointment to hear that Ms. Foreman is resigning. Almost every time I write, I think back to her lesson in ninth grade on whether to use the word which or that. I remember in ninth grade, we started off every class with engaging writing prompts and we always had lively discussions about current events and the text we were reading. And last year, Ms. Foreman was by far one of the best teachers in the middle school during the start of the pandemic. I overheard my sister's classes. They talked about books and current events. And also they had long conversations just about how everyone was doing. And I think that's really important. I'm really disheartened to see such a wonderful English teacher leave our district. And I really, really hope that this resignation is perceived as a big loss by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia and Sabine. We're going to open it up for public comment this first public comment period. If you could please use the raise your hand feature and Melissa Deliberer will call on you. You have three minutes to address the Board of Education on matters pertaining to the agenda this evening. Please state your name and if you are a resident of Hastings, if you would like to speak on matters that are not on our agenda, but it related to the district, you may do so at the second public comment period. Barbara Rizzo. You can unmute yourself. She hear me? Can you hear me, Barbara? Barbara Rizzo, Melissa Deliberer is calling on you to participate in public comment if you can hear me. I don't know if she, she might have taken her hand down. Okay. Adrian Kirkland.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is, it's actually Adrian Foreman. I'm, I'm married and that's my married name, but thank you. I'm a, this is Adrian Foreman. I am a resident of Hastings of over 11 years. I have a son who is now a sophomore in college who went to Hastings Schools, have a son who's a junior. Those of you who know me know how much I love this community. Really love Sophia at this moment for giving me such nice memories of you and your sister. I became a teacher because I wanted to be part of what I saw my kids being part of when, when they, they were in school here and teaching to me is hand in hand with social justice. So with that in mind, I'm going to read my resignation letter. I would like for everyone who's listening to know that the resignation letter that's actually posted with tonight's agenda is not the letter I wrote. It's not a letter I approved. And this is the letter I wrote on February 17th to Jennifer Sporelli.
Ms. Foreman, I would like you to please refer to board policy, which states that public comment cannot include personnel matters or address personnel directly as part of the meeting.
Okay, absolutely. And that makes if you would like to use the remainder of your time to make a public comment that does not have to pertain to your personnel matter, you may do so. Absolutely. At this time, I would like to say that the district has censored my speech without my permission because they do not like the point of view that I have about censorship in the schools, in the district and the lack of response by our superintendent to our eighth grade students directly regarding.
I'm sorry, Ms. Foreman, I'm going to have to make you.
Because you're not respecting my space and my time, I vote in this town and I will be heard.
Yes.
I will be heard. You can mute me if you'd like, but I will be heard because the district has already tried to silence me once. If.
You may not address any personnel from the district directly in public comment.
I'm not addressing anyone directly. I'm saying this. Our students have made themselves heard. Our eighth grade students have written directly to the administration about matters deeply important to them regarding free speech and the right to express themselves and be heard. And they have not received a response from the administration overall. I won't be specific if that's what you're asking. But our highest leaders in this district do not deign to give a response to our eighth grade students. And I think that's reprehensible and excusable. And if that is their definition of leadership, I strongly disagree. And I am fortunate that I'm in a position to say, I won't be a part of this. And thank God, my.
Thank you. We don't have any more public comment at this time. Thank you, Melissa. So this evening, we are very fortunate to have science research presented by our student, Adam Oppenheimer. And I know that Ms. Shandroff is here to introduce the board to the exemplary work of, of Adam. Ms. Shandroff?
Thank you so much. And thank you to Dr. Henning Piedmont and Melissa Semansky for inviting us to the board meeting tonight to hear Adam talk about his research, which is focused on blazars. He worked with actually a community member who's been incredibly supportive also of my science research program, Rashmi Mukherjee, who teaches at Burner College and works at Nevis Labs in Irvington. And she's supported Adam for the past two summers. And I really appreciate that. And I think Adam learned a tremendous amount in his two summers there at Nevis Labs. So I'll let Adam take it away and thank you again. And thank you to the Board of Education for, you know, hearing about our science program this year.
Yep, thank you so much. So can I just share my screen then? Let me just make sure that the. Can everyone see the presentation? Perfect, just give me a minute. I'm ready when you are, is everyone? Perfect. Hello, my name is Adam and today I'm going to be presenting on an investigation of blazar jet variability, their analysis of ton 599. And the first question that might come up is, what exactly is this thing that I call a blazar? A blazar is a type of galaxy, a galaxy of a supermassive black hole in its center, as seen in this artist rendition, that consumes matter in this yellow accretion disk around it and then projects the incredible amount of energy created into two very high energy jets, which can be seen here in blue. And these jets are composed of many different particles, such as very high energy photons known as gamma rays, very high energy electrons, very high energy protons and other particles. And the reason why it's so interesting to observe these is because the incredibly high energy phenomenon, which have to occur within the blazar to create these jets. And blazers are interesting because they're a type of this galaxy in which the jet is pointed towards Earth, making it very easy to observe these signals and to analyze them. So the data I used was collected from the Fermilac Telescope Array. Here is an artist's rendition of it, and it's a telescope located in the upper atmosphere that's able to scan the sky and look for sources like this. As seen here, that's the observation area where it collects the photons measured. The specific phenomenon I looked into was something known as variability. So variability is just a dramatic change. So this dramatic change happens in, you can see on these plots, there's this dormant level of basically the number of photons received in a given amount of time. And this can dramatically increase. See, for, there's a relatively constant level in this region, in this region, in this region. Then you have significant increases around here and here, known as flares. So these flares start from like this dormant level, rise up to a peak and return back down to this dormant level. However, people don't entirely understand what causes these or if there are any patterns to when and how they occur, which is what this researcher is trying to do. Look into these specific flares, analyze them and see if there's things we can learn about these sources. The specific source I looked at was a blazar known as ton 599. And as seen on the NASA Sky Survey, it's right here. And the reason why I chose this source for investigation was because a few years ago, in December of 2017, it had an incredibly significant flare. And it's the first significant flare ever seen from this source, which is why it was so interesting to observe. While previous research has looked at this specific flare, there has not been research looking at ton 599 over a much wider period of time and trying to conduct analysis and learn things about it over that much wider period of time, which is what this analysis did. So there were two main parts of my analysis. First, I just tried to find these flares. And then after finding the flares, I tried to model that. So if we see this liker, we can see the steps by which I've started. So if we see this liker, we can see the steps by which I've started finding flares. So first, the blue points here are just the data. It's the basically photons measuring a given amount of time as time progresses. And then I first created a step function, which are these black bars, which make it much easier for me to analyze the data as it eliminates a lot of the noise which exists in the signal, making it much easier for me to analyze. The second thing I calculated was this yellow line, which is the quiescent flux or that dormant flux. So while in a non-flared state, it's basically the amount of photons per second that is released by one of these jets. So there are many algorithms which could be used to do it. And that was that second thing I calculated. Now that I had these two incredibly important pieces of information, I had a simplified version of the data through these step function blocks. And then I had the baseline flux by this yellow curve. I was able to actually try finding the flares. So first, I made sure that I would find maximum points that were above a certain minimum threshold. And that was this red line, which I chose three times the quiescent flux to be that minimum threshold. And then I would basically add these blocks, they're called Bayesian blocks, to the left and the right of the peak until I've returned to this yellow quiescent level. So those steps led to me finding these two regions to be significant flare regions, going to the left and to the right, and then eventually finding those regions. And then once I had these regions, I zoomed in on them, making finer basically graphs and then modeling them with an exponential profile. And then from this exponential profile, I was able to obtain some information about these flares by just using the parameters, which I'll get to in a second. Now we can look at a little bit of the results I found. So here is that like curve again, and you can see there were two significant flare periods I found, one and two. And then here is a zoomed in version of those plots, this one associating of the first flare and this one associating the second flare. And then once I zoomed in here, I found three flares in these two periods. I found one flare in that first time period and two flares in that second time period. So here they are. The blue is just that the data and the yellow curve here represents that exponential profile I modeled to each of these sources. So the, those three yellow curves are the exponential model I used. If we just look here, there are, here are all those parameters I calculated. A lot of it isn't that important. These first five F naught T naught, the rise time, the fall time and the FC are all those constants or parameters that I found from running the models. And then here were just two things that I calculated. I found the asymmetry of the flares, finding that all flares basically had a shorter rise time than a decay time. And then I also was able to determine a limit on some physical property of the blade of these Blazars. The specific thing I looked into was trying to find the, like an upper limit on the size of the emission region for like gamma rays within the Blazer. And yeah, so most importantly, in my opinion, the algorithm was designed so it can now be used at other Blazer sources in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Could you speak, Adam, about the specific competition that you shared this research at and the accolades you received?
Yeah. So I presented this at the JSHS competition, which was last January, late January, so January 30th. And then for each category, I was put into the physical science category. There's a room of 12 people. And then each person presents in like each at a time, right? So you have a 12 minute presentation followed by a five minute question and answer period. And then after that, the judges collaborate and they talk and then they create a ranking and they release the top five, right? So I was able to score second in my room, which means I was then able to proceed to the, like the Westchester JSHS was what happened the 30th, which is like the local running of the competition. So then because I placed well enough, I can now compete in the statewide competition, which I think will be mid-March, around March 12th or 13th, which and then we'll see what happens then. And then if I do well enough, then I'll be able to proceed to the next round, which is, I think, the national level.
Yes. And I just want to say how proud I am of Adam. It's very competitive, these, this competition. And so the fact that he placed second in his room is quite impressive. And, you know, I look forward to seeing how he does in Albany, goes to state level.
Yeah. So thank you, Adam. First of all, I think obviously I don't know anything about this. And you actually made it somewhat understandable, which is, I think, possibly even more amazing than the science itself. Because I think, you know, just your, I kind of understand what a Blazer is now, what variability, jet variability is. It's fascinating that this ton fit 599 has never been measured before. And that you're working with primary data to, to actually do that measurement. I think Nevis is one of the premier labs maybe in the country, if not, you know, worldwide. So it just speaks to just an amazing student, amazing access, amazing research, and probably most amazingly, your ability to communicate that to a lay audience. It's like ticking so many important boxes for science and communication. So kudos to you. Really excellent job.
Thank you so much.
Miss Adam and Ms. Shandroff, thank you so much for participating this evening and sharing the research and the presentation itself. I think, you know, seeing, seeing the research, but then also seeing your skills and being able to convey that research to, to us is, is clear why you moved on from our, the local competition. And we wish you the best of luck and, and thank you for representing Hastings and for your own personal accomplishments, but then also representing the accomplishments of our science department.
Yes. Thanks so much, Adam. We'll be rooting for you and we look forward to hearing about your experiences next month. And thank you again, Mrs. Shandroff, as usual, for, you know, inspiring these young, you know, scientists, as well as the, the members of your science, the rest of the department. So that this enthusiasm and passion for learning about phenomenon and testing it through, you know, research is the epitome of, you know, you know, sort of, you know, putting the, the practices into sort of, you know, you know, you know, real use. You know, applying them to solve your problems. So thank you, Adam, for your enthusiasm and your excitement. And as I said, we, we welcome you back after next month's competition.
Valerie, it's Lou. Can I just say two words?
Absolutely.
Hello, everybody. Lou Eddie Pietro, I'm the principal. Obviously, I'm the, the person that's always proud because I wa, I get to walk into those classrooms and, and see all of the students do that such high quality work. So Adam, you may have gotten all the accolades, but I know you, you think like I do that all of your peers really, really worked so hard under the leadership of Ms. Shandroff. And, and every single student in the science research program really deserves all of the accolades. And, and it starts from the top with Ms. Shandroff really leading the group. So I, I, it's always an open invite to anybody who wants to come in. I know Ms. Shandroff is always willing to open her doors as well to come in and listen to some of the work and some of the research that's happening. I know many of our juniors are trying to find some placements for the summer because last summer was a little difficult because of the pandemic. But this is the great work that's happening in our science department. And I just wanted to highlight that our students are really, really working hard under the leadership of really talented staff members. So I am proud of them. And, you know, you can see it on my face, but I get to see it every day. So I'm happy that the board and the community gets to see a glimpse of that this evening. Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. A, for those kind words. And thank you. I could really couldn't do it without the support of Mr. A and Ms. Hardesty. They're always there for me whenever I need anything. So thank you so much.
Great. We get to move on from science to math this evening, which we're really fortunate to hear from Ms. Samansky and the work of the math committee. I know that the board has been following some of this progress and some board members have reached out to see sort of a, a longer view update of how the work of Mac mini has been coming along. So we appreciate the time that you and the committee have put this presentation together. Thank you, Ms. Samansky.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Again, so it's my pleasure to present to you this evening on behalf of the committee about the work that we've been doing. Our members have been on a monthly journey since this past summer. And I'll, I'll start to share my screen. And as I do, I just wanted to say, on a personal note, it has really truly been incredible to be a member of this committee. I think that in the midst of a pandemic, so we started probably at the end of June. So right at the start of it all, right? So even in the midst of a pandemic, this group has coalesced together. Members of the group have overcome some very significant personal circumstances, have made concerted efforts to attend, have really been there for each other. And it has truly been a pleasure to see the commitment to continuous improvement and to the learning. So I'm going to share my screen. I wanted to say thank you for the many people who volunteered their time to be here this evening. And we'll be able to hear from committee members as well. Let me just start us off here. Okay, so let's begin. Can you see this? Okay, this is okay. So let's begin with the purpose of our committee. There are two ultimate objectives for our work together as a collective. And the first one pertains to students. And that is improve mathematics outcomes, particularly for groups of students where performance disparities have persisted. So in Hastings, for many years, that has been across four demographic groups specifically in mathematics. And that's African American students, Hispanic students, students who are economically insecure and students with IEPs. And so that's one of our key objectives. The second objective of our work together pertains to adults, and that's with anything related to professional learning, and that's around enhanced practice. We want to make sure that we are constantly learning and that we're constantly growing to enhance our practice, to ensure that it's as student centered as possible. And so for mathematics, student centered practice is really centered around helping students to think critically, to problem solve, to actively construct new understandings, but also to be meeting them where they are. And so to reach those two purposes, the research actually points to two key areas. And one of them is around this notion of coherence and the other one is around inquiry orientation. And when we talk about coherence, essentially, we're just talking about being on the same page. And that comes in a couple of different ways. So one of that, those ways is around the nature of mathematics. And that's around developing a shared research-based aspirational vision of mathematics together. That idea of a conceptual understanding of what we're all rallying behind so that we can be moving in the same direction. The second is really around the more practical level, which is what are some approaches that we want to be leveraging to be promoting mathematics learning? So the other driver that is designed to support adult learning is around an inquiry orientation. An inquiry is a really powerful form of professional learning. And essentially, it's about getting curious and it's around approaching things through a stance of being critical friends to each other, to being vulnerable with our practice. It can take different forms, including engaging in examining lessons, analyzing student work together, thinking about learning walks, thinking about lesson design. All of those things are ways that we can, as adult learners, engage in an inquiry process. And in every single one of those cases, it requires an environment where we can be vulnerable. So we have to be safe to feel like we can explore areas of, of our practice that we'd like to grow. And by sharing that with others, we're able to help each other and make each other better. And so it's not about, it's not about necessarily, here's what you need to be doing, but it's more around seeking understanding, constructing meaning. And that happens a couple of different things. One of them is dialogue. So it's active meaning making. And the other one is actually through data, like really grounding that meaning making, that dialogue in actual artifacts. So as a group, we've been working on those different things, use of artifacts and protocols. Planning the committee sessions has occurred for these drivers of success in mind. And I'll be sharing the specifics of our work together. I like to take us all on a journey through the sessions, including what the committee participations look like, learning objectives that have been associated with our sessions and examples of how we've engaged together. So first off, we're a vertical committee of 20 members and we are a volunteer committee from across the system. And this group works in a way that is purposely designed to be as collaborative and lateral as possible. And what I mean by that is we're all learners together regardless of our role. So we're all engaged in the same activities. We take turns in some cases facilitating. That can happen within shared breakout spaces. And you can see here from the vertical committee table, what the breakdown is. And a couple, I don't want to mislead because there are a couple of people that can fall into two places. So for example, we have a special education teacher at the middle school who's also representing the six, eight classroom teacher perspective, but I didn't want to count that person twice. So you can get a sense that we have administrators participating at the district level, at each of the building levels. We have eight teachers of mathematics, one science teacher, one STEAM teacher, which is science, technology, engineering, art and mathematics. And they work in an interdisciplinary way with mathematics. So they've been engaged in our committee work. One mathematics interventionist, three special education teachers, a teacher of English as a New Language. And I talked a little bit about the building administrators. So I'd like to recognize and thank some key thought partners who have been pivotal for this journey. And one is Kathy Williams, and she is the co-founder and executive director of UCube at a Stanford University. And she has been not only with us for portions of our learning sessions, but very active behind the scenes. And she's a, she works internationally and I would absolutely say that she's an international expert. She comes with the lens of mathematics and that expertise. And she's worked both at the university level, at a curricular level in terms of design process, and also with professional learning and has been a very active thought partner. I would like to recognize and thank our very own Dr. Greg Stevens, who has given a considerable amount of his time and a high level of expertise, both behind the scenes and during sessions. And we've been involved in guiding the work together, planning and processing. And I'd also like to thank members of the committee. And the committee members within and after each session have been providing active feedback so that we could influence the design of the sessions through the ongoing feedback that's been provided by the group. So as our work has unfolded, there have been a number of key areas of focus during the committee sessions to support the work around coherence and inquiry. And they include understanding the research about mathematics and learning, deepening our knowledge of the standards. And I'll speak more specifically to that, but we've really honed in on the standards for mathematical practice and building strength around the use of data. And you see teacher artifacts and student artifacts. And then supporting capacity around curiosity to inform our practice. And so basically strengthening our use of data, working together, unpacking things, posing critical questions about our practice and helping each other to work through them in a way that's been informed by what we've learned together around research and standards. So our first two sessions were co-facilitated by Kathy Williams, Greg and I, with each of us taking on portions of the agenda. And as our early work together unfolded, we began by setting norms of how we were going to work together. We began learning about mathematics research specifically from Kathy and experiencing mathematics together as learners so that we could put our role, ourselves in the role of a student as we were experiencing it and starting to unpack the standards for mathematical practice. We unpacked some articles in, which we read in advance of the sessions. And we began exploring our beliefs and values and started questioning some things about mathematics. And we framed that as a four A's protocol. What do we agree with? What do we aspire to? What do we want to argue in terms of some of what we were reading? So we, we began to push, push our thinking around what do we believe? What do we value around mathematics? Kathy engaged us in considering concepts from the research, including some very key things, which is that all students can learn to high levels, all students. Student beliefs about themselves as learners and what a big difference that makes in their ability to perform and how they see themselves as effective. The importance of mistakes and productive struggle. And this notion of dissociating mathematics from speed. And we had some very good conversations around that, particularly around wanting to cultivate fluency in mathematics. But also when Kathy brought us into the. but also when Kathy brought us into the brain research around that, there was that fear factor around mathematics that comes into play that gets amplified sometimes when you fold speed into the mix. And also teachers' beliefs and messaging to students. So those were the key areas of focus from the research that Kathy brought us through. The work of the committee has been largely experiential. And so this is an example of a learning activity that we engaged in together with Kathy. And this particular activity was designed for us to explore and understand the importance of visual mathematics for the brain and for learning. And it got us into thinking about actual neural networks and how the brain processes mathematics. So I want everyone to just take a look at these three cases and consider how you see the pattern growing, which is what we did together as a committee as one of our early learning activities. So where do you see the new circles being added? So take a look at case one, and then take a look at case two. And just visually for yourself, take a moment. Where do you see those new circles being added and coming into play? So we used colored pencils when we were doing this learning activity. And we negotiated this together after a bit of coloring, and we were sharing and talking through how we saw it changing. And it was interesting because, as you might expect, we all saw it a little bit differently. And so we talked about approaching mathematics through multiple pathways and how that was very important for student learning as well. We began thinking about carrying out the pattern beyond the third case. And then some of us were able to model, meaning represent, the pattern with a rule or an expression. And again, that happened in different ways. Some of us saw case one to case two to case three moving plus eight plus 12. And others actually saw two n squared plus two times n plus one plus one. And then others saw a different way of modeling. And this experience that we engaged in together was connected to the elements of an article that we read together, focused on research around visual mathematics for the brain and for learning. And then that was then connected back with the standards for mathematical practice. So I referenced one of them, which was model with mathematics. That's one of the standards for mathematical practice. And there are eight of them, which I'll outline in a moment. And these were emphasized in our work for a variety of different reasons. So first, they're critical components of the New York State Next Generation Mathematics Learning Standards. The state explains that the standards for mathematical practice describe varieties of expertise that mathematics educators at all levels should seek to develop in their students. These practices are informed by important processes and proficiencies. The first of these are the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Process Standards. And the second are strands of mathematical proficiency specified in the National Research Council's report, adding it up. So that's coming right out of the state document, and I put them both up there on the slide just to outline in terms of those processes and proficiencies. And when you think about it, one of the reasons that we have focused also on the standards for mathematical practice in addition to their emphasis in, in learning expectations is that as a district, we've been exploring skills and dispositions that students need to be successful. And these processes and proficiencies that are connected with those practice standards, they add to that narrative around what are students going to need to function in an uncertain world? And thinking about what we've read around what schools could be most likely to succeed, this is all important when we're thinking about our aspirational vision for students moving through the system. And then third, all eight practice standards are applicable across grades K through 12. So when we're thinking about one of those drivers that I mentioned earlier, which is coherence around approaches to remote mathematics learning, the practices provide a strong through line across the grades. I wanted to share that because that's been part of the rationale to focus on the mathematical practices. So here they are. Again, there are eight of them. And they support a process-oriented approach to mathematics learning. When we consider the skills that students need to be successful within the discipline of mathematics across other content areas and in life, these eight practices are actually consistently relevant, even though they're specific to mathematics. So as you can see, some of the practices are as relevant for engaging in a civics debate such as constructing viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others as they would be for landing on Mars or for baking a birthday cake. So when you're thinking about those real world applications, the practices really do need to be elevated, both to access and apply the content and thinking long about where students are going, where they're, where we're hoping for them to be. So during sessions three and four, we delved more deeply into the practice standards, and the committee members led the learning of the group. And they engaged in teachbacks, and they were cross-building groups that worked together in either pairs or trios. And they were assigned a standard. And the teachback approach was taken to support distributed leadership and the engagement of the group and to make sure that we were helping each other to learn more deeply about the practices. And then thinking about what they would look like at the different developmental levels. So what is that arc? So to practice what I preach around the importance of experiential learning, I wanted to briefly engage the board in a portion of one of the teachbacks that was designed and facilitated by three members of the committee. So I thought this could be fun and also informative. We really enjoyed it together as a group as well. So I'd like you to just please consider which of the following images doesn't belong. And this is very low stakes, and please be prepared to support your reasoning. So here they are. The sentence starters in the yellow box can help you as you construct your arguments and critique the reasoning of other board trustees who might contribute ideas to the conversation. But these are the four images, so have a go. So which of these doesn't belong?
I'll start, and someone can agree or disagree, but I don't think the brownie, which is the item on the lower right corner, belongs because it is not round in shape, has corners.
I'm going to disagree, although I think you're right, and there's other right answers. I'm going to go with the donut because it's not brown.
I see what you're saying, but I see it this way. I think the ball doesn't belong because it's not a baked good.
I wasn't, I, I agree with all of the connections you, people have brought up. I wasn't sure if that ball was chocolate, and that gave me pause. So I was going to say the ball, but then I thought, maybe those strips are white chocolate. And then I was going into the shape issue, and I was gonna exclude the brownie.
So well done. Oh, oh, please, yes.
I think the one in the, I don't know what to call it, the one in the upper right doesn't belong.
Because?
My reasoning's gonna be really weird, okay? The ball is not food, so it doesn't seem to fit with the others in that regard. The donut's a different color, so that seems to mismatch the others. The brownie doesn't seem to match the others because it's a different shape. And the one in the upper right, I can't figure out what, what's different about it, you know, in any regard. So that's why that one doesn't fit for me.
So thank you, everyone, and well done. And really, this is one example of one of the teachbacks that was prepared for our session. And then we were able to delve more deeply into this particular practice. And, and the teachers who prepared this led us into thinking about, okay, so what is, what is there a progression in terms of, you know, the interdisciplinary connection with society and the social emotional connection? And thinking about how we could move between mathematics and other areas of the curriculum. We also started thinking about, they took us through progression. Like, how would the practice standard developmentally progress? If you're thinking elementary school, you're thinking middle school, you're thinking high school, and looking at these different scenarios where you're looking at shapes, right? And that could be extremely appropriate with working with first grade geometry content and the content standard focusing on distinguishing between attributes of shapes as a first grader, and then bringing in the practice of a critique, critique the reasoning of others, right? Construct viable arguments, critique the reasoning of others. Moving into the middle school where you could potentially have content bringing students to explore, explore square roots. This could be another example of where you could marry a practice standard, thinking about at the high school level where students may be building functions, like really contextualizing it and partnering it with the content. So in each of these cases, the practice standard is relevant across the three buildings, and it progresses, and it can come to life in different ways. And there's both breadth and depth when you're thinking about content and you're thinking about the critical thinking skills, and you're also thinking about the expressive language as students are moving from kindergarten through 12th grade. So while the teachbacks focused on individual standards to push depth of understanding, we did discuss together, and this was, this was really an important point, that it would be atypical for any of the practices to be taught in isolation. So it's again, how are all of these things working together, and how do they look as students are progressing? So why is it important to be doing this and to understand these types of progressions? Well, from an equity lens, it ensures that students are having similar curricular experiences across a grade. We would never ever expect a cookie cutter approach to learning. However, we are expecting that there's a progression, and students are having some similar opportunities to engage. We're also thinking about student-centered learning. And before being able to, if you're differentiating for your learners within the classroom, you really do have to understand what comes before and what comes after. And within any given classroom, you will have lots of outliers with lots of different strengths and many different areas for growth, and understanding progression like this supports the ability to modify instruction and meeting students developmentally where they are in a student-centered way. So during sessions five and six, we began our collaborative inquiry work where we started to investigate instruction. And in the first inquiry session, session five, we explored some lessons. So people came prepared to speak to some lessons that illustrated various standards for mathematical practice with an artifact, and then considered opportunities to enhance student learning around them. So we looked at, you know, where is there evidence of the mathematical practice standard? And where are there then opportunities? And we have been, as a committee, toggling between building-based groups and vertical groups so that we can work, you know, at the elementary level, at the middle school level, at the high school level, and then across the system so that there's that cross-pollination happening. So we used in the second session a looking at data protocol. And the first step in that protocol, it was just really a scripted process to push us to slow down and to do some deep noticing work when we were encountering either our own practice or a piece of student work. So the first step is around describing the artifact. And that's actually a critically important step because often in mathematics, in education, in life, we jump very quickly to inference about what others do or do not understand. And this, this first step in the process just pushes a deeper look. So just describe what you see, describe. The next piece was interpreting the artifact, and that's when we were moving into inference mode. So what were the strengths that we saw? What were some of the challenges? What were some of the thought processes? The third step was around implications to practice. So what steps can we take next? What strategies might, might be most effective to implement? What else would you like to see happen? What kind of assignments or assessments would provide this information? What does this conversation make you think about in terms of your own practice and teaching and learning in general? And then what are the implications for equity? So that was all embedded as part of the protocol. Our most recent session, as a committee, has been focused on student work. So committee members shared learning artifacts ahead of the session, and we engaged in a consultancy protocol. That was really, that's just the name of it. It's a consultancy protocol. And basically, we consult with each other, and this is an inquiry experience where we can work with the data. So the person who presented the art, the person who submitted the artifact presented it, and they described the portfolio piece. They provide an overview, including strengths of the student. And I should say, participants were asked to bring a student work sample that was of a student who was struggling in a particular area. And I encouraged people to think about the four groups that I described earlier. So our African American students, our Hispanic students, students with disabilities, and economically insecure students. So falling into one of those groups and really taking a look at where are the strengths, and let's start with a strength-based approach. Then where are the issues, any kinds of concerns? Where are the examples that you see that in the data? And then posing a question for the group to consider. And that's the part I actually like most about this particular protocol. And I'd be interested to hear from members of the group in a little bit about it. But it really empowers people around that piece, around here's the piece I'm struggling with, with this student. And thinking about how as a community of learners, we can really unpack that together, support each other, and then see how that translates into practice. But if the goal is really for the presenter to learn more about their question and analyze more deeply so that they can go back and actually work with the student in a way where they might make a change to something substantive that's based off of what we've been learning about together. So whether it be the research, whether it be the standards, right? Where are their opportunities, starting with a child's strengths? And then moving into the, the actual artifact showing where an area for need might be. The presenter then responded to, to questions and that, that the group posed. And then the group talked with each other. So, you know, participants in the committee, they just talked about student work and implications for practice in light of the presenter's question. And then they, the presenter stayed silent and just listened. So it was kind of talking about someone behind their back in front of them, right? And so from that process, the presenter could then share what resonated and what they could then apply to their practice, bringing back into the classroom to be supportive of the learner. So with our early work with Kathy around the brain research related to the importance of visual mathematics, our group early on began to coalesce around this idea that math is art. That was one of the themes that was coming through because we were thinking about such, what, what the visual does to the brain and the pathways and to the depth of understanding. And so we did begin thinking about that together, which I actually thought was very fitting for Hastings, right? This idea that math is art and the importance of the visual and the neural pathway. So looking back at what we've done so far as a committee and keeping that artistic theme in mind, I kind of grouped it into three scenes. The first is really gathering a group and dream, and that's around creating that coherent vision and coalescing around, you know, what have we learned from the research? What are we thinking about with elevating the practices? So we know content is important, but how can we bring the practices up so that they're front and center in the work that we're doing with students? And that required moving into the second scene, which is delving into those practice standards and not just learning about each of them, but thinking about what does it look like? What does it sound like? And what is the arc? So as, as students are moving through the system, how does it evolve? And then that's where theory and practice are starting to merge together. And then the third is that notion of collaborative inquiry. And that, that idea as adult learners of being curious, collaborating with each other, and using data to inform our practice is really quite critical, and it's pretty joyful. You know, it's, it's nice to be able to do that with colleagues. And there is a gentleman by the name of Hattie, and actually, the administrative team is reading about some, some of this now in a book that Valerie has us working with. And it's around this notion of collective efficacy. And that's just a fancy way of saying we're better together. And when we have beliefs and values that, that we, together, we can move in the same direction, that our students could That our students could achieve in very high levels. And we're confident that together we can solve problems to move forward with our practice to support all of our learners. That has pretty much the highest correlation with student movement. So when we're thinking about the connection with student learning and growth. That has what they call the biggest effect size. That is the biggest impact about working together as a team around problems of practice and moving forward. So just to bring in one other researcher, and that is Kirk Patrick. He is a researcher in the field of education and he describes four levels. And they must happen sequentially within professional learning. To ensure successful change to happen. And the first level is simply reaction. Do the people on our committee like working together? Like, how's it going? Right? So that level has to be in place first, like the, the group has to like the work. We have to be in it together. The second level is knowing, learning, knowing something differently. Like what are you picking up from our experiences together that help you to know differently? The third is behavior. And for our purposes, that's the outcome for the educators that I was talking about earlier. Our purpose for educators, like how are we shifting our behavior? So thinking about what we've been learning, how does that now inform our practice? And then the fourth, which is always, always lagging is the student outcome, right? The results for students. And, um, levels one and levels two, so the reaction and learning, knowing differently. Has to happen before any other change can occur and be successful. So as a group, we've been, uh, moving through reaction and moving through learning. And I've been very eager to collect feedback along the way to see, are we on the right track? How are we doing if we need to shift anything? The group has been really active in the design process and I've appreciated the feedback. And, you know, anything that we think that we can do differently, do better together. I like to involve that. So as we're planning together for the next session, there have been many voices in that. And our next session will take place soon. We're going to be continuing the inquiry in the student data with the vertical groups. And that was actually upon request from the committee. They wanted to stay a little bit longer with this protocol. To look at the student work and to think about implications for practice. And then outside of the committee context, there have been discussions in mathematics that have begun with Lou Ada Pietro, Jennifer Spirelli, Greg Stevens and I around mathematics course progressions, particularly at the middle and high school level, grade six through 12. And I know coming into this system not long ago, and just prior to the pandemic, that was a very hot topic. Both within the system, with teachers and outside of the system with, with families. You know, thinking about making sure that students had, um, a course progression. That allowed for not only some, some flexibility in terms of movement, but also access. So thinking about how there could be, um, you know, how there, how there could be movement between the course progression. And how we were really ensuring, uh, movement from one to the next, to the next. Where there weren't big gaps that we felt like we had to quickly fill. So we've been looking together at that. Those conversations have just started. So they're in the early phases. My, um, expectation is that we will be in a good place thinking about moving into next year. Having a shift in, in revising those progressions. So those conversations have just started and they require additional voices. So it certainly cannot just be the four of us. I have involved Kathy Williams expertise to take a look at some of the preliminary thinking. And, um, she's been incredibly supportive and has posed some really good questions for us to consider. As we're continuing to move forward in that process. And so we should be seeing that evolution of our course, uh, sequence by next year. And taking into account challenges and barriers, again, that have been reported to us. Um, and then finally, there will be an exploration of resources. And that will also be happening collaboratively. We'll be looking at some resources and to do that work well. We really do need to make sure that we have some criteria to vet them against. And that is another reason why it's critically important that we started with a coherent approach. Thinking about that conceptual coherence so that we can think about, you know, where does this resource sit? In, in alignment to the research, in alignment to the practices, in alignment to our beliefs and our values. And so we will be exploring some resources. We'll be adopting one that's aligned to the vision that we've been creating. And this will begin, uh, at the middle school level. Since that's where the need and the interest have been most. And this too will support student centered practice as well as coherence. So I want to, um, acknowledge that a number of the committee members have very willingly and graciously volunteered their time to be here tonight. And I really want to say thank you. I know we kicked off our mathematics with a math party. This is a different kind of a math party. However, I love that you're all here. So thank you for creating space for that and for, for being here to join me. I really appreciate that. And I have loved working with you and I'd love for you to just speak from the heart on anything that you have. Begun to know differently, do differently as a result of your, your participation. Or just any thoughts that you've had about participating as a member of our group. So really nothing scripted and I just, you know, would love to just have your voice and make sure that, um, that what's resonated for you is accurately represented this evening.
I'll just share, uh, Amy Keston Hillside. It's been truly a pleasure working with this committee. Uh, I think the vertical articulation has been largely beneficial, being able to hear not only what the Hillside teachers are doing K4, but how that then translates to the middle school and high school. And hearing about the great work that starts at the elementary school and grows, uh, has been a real privilege. So I want to thank all the members of the math committee and Melissa for your leadership.
Hi, it's Laura Sullivan, and I just want to build on what Amy said. I think, um, I want to thank Melissa for providing, um, I'll speak for myself, an opportunity to be part of a committee. That, um, delves into a topic in such an interesting and engaging way. And I appreciated all of the norms and all of the, 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 um, the scenarios that you set up. And how we engaged in student work and how we looked at work and, and, um, it just, it just gave us a, to me, it gave me a different lens of being part of a, um, a district wide committee in which I really felt part of and, and very involved in. So thank you for that, Melissa.
I'm going to jump in. I, I was actually a math teacher. This is Lou Ada Pietro. I was a math teacher in middle school as my first, um, dive into public education. For me, the, the beauty of the committee is that we didn't talk about math courses. We didn't talk about, uh, mathematics per se, uh, as far as content is concerned. But we talked about how people saw mathematics and how different learners looked at different problem sets differently. And how, you know, similar to what Melissa just presented today and had the board look at different pictures and, and so forth. Having 20 people talk about the same equation or the same example in different ways. Really opened up a, a lot of our eyes onto our own practices, uh, within our classrooms. You know, it's sort of the beginning of really talking about those progressions and, and that backward design. You know, as the high school person, a person is really knows mostly only high school mathematics and, you know, a little bit of middle school. I always talk about that backward design. What, what do I want my, my seniors to know going into college? And to have the elementary folks in the room and to have the middle school folks in the room really is, is enlightening. And, and, you know, the good work that's happening down at the middle school and the elementary school for me was really eye opening. And, and, and again, you know, like I talked about being proud of our science research program. I'm proud of the work that we're doing K-12. And I, and I think that's an important piece to sort of get us all on the same page with Melissa's guidance. To really have those tough conversations and how we improve mathematics K-12, right? So we're all, we're all, we're all in it for the same reasons. And it takes some time to kind of have those discussions and get us there. So from my perspective, I, you know, I value the, the conversations that we've had. The, the safe space to kind of make mistakes really, and, and to sort of, um, you know, tap each other in a way. That really a few aha moments for me. Um, and, you know, I'm sure many on this call volunteer on many committees. We all don't want another committee, but this is a committee that I, you know, I feel is so invaluable. Um, and, and I, I want to thank Melissa for really working hard and getting this group together. And I think we have 20 of the most talented people working together on this.
Hey, this is
Matt Lyons, um, high school special ed and math. And, uh, I think what's really nice for me is one, being able to work with colleagues that I really never worked with from elementary and middle school and, um, hearing the ideas and seeing things that they present to their students. And actually seeing some really cool stuff, even on the elementary level that you say, oh, wow, this is really cool. Maybe I can work this into something, you know, into a high school class. And just being pushed to think about, you know, how can I make this more, more fun for the kids? More, um, engaging, especially for kids who really struggle or just really don't love math. You know, like how can we, how can we light that fire, um, through our conversations? So, um, that's what's working for me. Thanks.
I could say, Mark Rosner, I teach science. Teaching can be a very isolating calling and we, we bang our heads over problems for months and years. And when we get together with teachers in different departments and different levels. We realize that a lot of the problems we have are more the same than they are different. And it's very reassuring to reach out to teachers and find that they, they see the same things in students that we see. And, and to work together with them and not just isolated and in parallel.
Yeah, Kevin Hanlon, Assistant Principal Farragut Middle School. I think the conversation happening within the groups who are both working in the same building. And then in the vertical alignment, not in the same buildings are crucial to the success for the students here in Hastings. Because their vertical articulation, as Ms. Cases was saying earlier, uh, is vital. And me still being new and learning faces and names, and it's very exciting. And looking at the work being done now and how the impact's going to have in the future is bright here.
I just wanted to jump in and say I met with, um, Ms. Smansky to talk about this whole program, what's going on. And I could really feel her enthusiasm for this group. And I wanted to say a special thanks for putting in that extra time. Because as Mr. Ada Pietro just said, I, I know you're full. But this kind of work is so incredibly valuable. So I, I'm just, I'm thrilled for our students and for you all to be developing, um, that connection. And, um, that kind of work going forward. It can only enhance, um, the curriculum and your experience and the kids' experiences. Thank you.
Well, I just want to give another shout out to Greg. And I, I have to say, Greg, I really appreciate all of the behind the scenes and during the scenes work. I just feel like it's been incredible to have you as a thought partner. You have a high level of mathematics expertise as a practitioner specifically in that. That is something that I personally find very aspirational. I cannot be an expert in everything and you certainly have that mathematics expertise. And together to be thinking about where are people and where can we bring them? And, and then to be, you know, actively engaged and thinking about how we model the things that we want. To be translating into the classroom around practice. Like how we're engaging in that way as adults so that we can then see it in the classroom as well. In terms of how people are working with students, um, is also really important too. So just wanted to say thank you and thanks to the whole committee. I know it's really late and I appreciate very much that you've come tonight.
Just one more, uh, thank you to everyone. And Dr. Stevens met with Ms. Samansky and myself last year. Uh, and for the purposes of, um, getting prepared to, uh, presented in, at an international conference on the impact and power of teacher collaboration in mathematics as a, you know, uh, change theory. That, you know, supports, you know, improvement, improved outcomes for not only students, but the ability for, you know, educators to develop efficacy in the sense of, you know, through their work together. They can solve these problems around student learning and, um, you know, and, and develop those practices that support those learners. So I want to thank you again, Dr. Stevens, for, you know, you know, really being a pioneer in this work. And as I said, because we, we had the pleasure of sitting with you last year and talking to you about what you were working on. And, you know, and, um, you know, being, you know, very supportive of, of your, you know, of this wonderful conference that you were going to present at, you know, you know, we really are positioned to, to, to really make those ideals, you know, come to fruition. So thank you so much for what you've been doing and continue to do. And thank everyone on the committee for what you've been doing as well. It's really awesome.
I could throw a final thought out. It's one of the few opportunities when we work on committees like this to bring some of the passion that our students see into the work with adults. And I think that's one of the, one of the powerful things that we can do as a district is to create opportunities to bring people's passions into the whole work of making the district, you know, work better. How you say this particular committee centered around something that I love. But the, but the idea of it, of focusing in on how we teach and how students learn. And what kinds of routines we can put together to make that all work better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens, and thank you to the entire committee. I, I do have a, a comment and then just two questions. And first, I, the work you're doing is so impressive and it, and it's clear that being collaborative is, is making such rich outcomes. I firstly want to say that I'm really impressed, um, that you focused on the research that shows that students' beliefs of themselves and the, and, and the quality of their belief in themselves is so related to their relationship to their success, specifically in math. And that also, um, teacher and peer biases and their influence on student success and the research that exists there. I think it's really impressive that, um, that teachers are thinking about that. And, um, thank you for bringing that research into the committee. I also, I have a question. First, when you say there's exploration of resources, does that, does that boil down? Mean that you're looking at, um, like new pieces of curriculum, new packages of curriculum or different types of, um, of models? For example, Engage New York Math or different types of, um, structures? Is that, is that what you mean by, um, exploration of resources?
Right, yes. So two actual, we'll look at a few or a couple physical resources. And, you know, we'll actually investigate them and we'll think about, you know, we'll think about together. So we've, you know, where's the research with, with things, with our coherence around the research? Where is, where are the practice standards? And how are they playing into the resources in a way that is aligned with our values? So yes, physical resources. So for example, Singapore is a resource, Big Ideas for Mathematics is a resource, Investigations, you know, something like that. To be able to serve as an anchor and a support so that we can actually, um, help to develop some of that coherence and provide an anchor for us to be able to work with and have a little bit more articulation around. So yeah.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, do you see, um, modeling a similar committee in different content areas? As you have for mathematics going forward in the future? Once this committee has had more time together, it has created more outcomes. Do you, um, Melissa, see, um, operating similarly with different, uh, departments?
I do, and I definitely want the committee feedback on what worked well, what we could do even better, thinking about that. But I do think it's critically important that we do have some vertical articulation. There are certain things that lend themselves to building level work. And there are other things that, that don't. But for example, there, um, there's an opportunity if we're looking at resources that we're reading, right? So thinking about what that could look like vertically across our system and having voices involved in that. So yes, I do see us using this as a model. We're thinking about how we can work systemically across other content areas. Moving forward with, you know, with a process that learns from what we've experienced together as a group and what we can bring to another content area.
Thank you.
And I also see And I also see this is ongoing. So I think, you know, when, when I was talking about inquiry earlier, you know, we've grounded it in artifacts and we've made a deliberate choice to do that. The conditions of the pandemic have been incredibly constraining. So even what it means to access student work has shifted, right? Like that, that idea of what is data, right? So we actually negotiated that together as a group and we thought about, well, what could we bring? Like, what could we look at? We're in a largely two dimensional space right now. So how can we make student thinking more visible? So yeah, I think that those are important considerations. And when we're thinking about other opportunities for inquiry, we may engage, like I mentioned earlier, in learning walks and lesson studies. And we've, we've begun, we've begun some preliminary conversations about what that could look like in other spaces. So I think it's a couple of things. One is this idea of the vertical structure is really important. And the other is around, what are some other elements that we feel are, you know, research-based and important for adult learning, for example, inquiry, that we could take outside of the committee context and maybe have some members of the committee engaging in so that it's experiential and based in the learning context. Right now, spending a very long time in a room with a group of people is constrained. I mean, because we've got the pandemic. But that doesn't mean that in the future it won't be. So part of this will be also creatively working with what we've got to try to grow some of the things that we've enjoyed and learned from the most.
Thank you so much, Melissa, and thank you to all the faculty and Dr. Stevens and principals for sharing the process and where the committee work is presently. This update was really informative. We're going to move on to the business items of the meeting. There are 15 items under Business A. Are there any thoughts or questions regarding these 15 items?
I did have something, but my notes here.
Yeah, hi there. Lauren, on number nine, can we get an update? What is the $4,000 charge for a memorial? Some sort of payment there? Looked like it was $750 and then a $4,000 charge going to flowers.
I understood that to be the speaking fee for the keynote speaker at the FMS Equity Day. Is that correct, Valerie?
There was a $250 charge for planning, a $500 charge for today, and then a, okay, and then a $4,000?
Yes.
It says Blue Flower Arts. I'm assuming that they don't sell flowers, though?
No.
Right, okay.
It's the honorarium for the keynote speaker?
Right. It's similar, it's modeled after the Racial Equity Day of the high school. So it follows this, you know, a similar pattern of having keynote speakers that students and the faculty, you know, sort of participating, listening to throughout the day, plus work that happens in classrooms virtually. So it's a very similar process and model.
The, can you, Valerie, just let us know the CSI proposals, the work that they're doing?
Sure, they're serving as, so our ears and eyes in terms of the technical oversight of the work that's occurring with Lyric. So because we don't have, you know, our own director of technology that, you know, with the expertise to really be able to, you know, to, you know, analyze, you know, at a very deep level, the, the contract agreements that we have with the Lyric for the work that that we're currently doing with them, which is the managed, you know, IT model. So we don't have anyone internal who has that level of expertise to really be able to, you know, to guide us through, you know, sort of long-term planning, you know, an extra set of eyes and ears around, you know, things that maybe we should be thinking about differently, you know, and not that we, you know, don't trust the lyric, but, you know, every district that, you know, engages with Lyric does have someone onsite or someone who, you know, is hired, you know, as an employee of the district to operate in this, this manner or perform this function. They can also help us to know at what point there are certain services that we may not need, which would be, you know, a cost savings or some other services that would be, you know, more important into helping us on the long term. So they work with districts in this capacity. There, there's sort of another layer of oversight to basically support the interests of the district in ensuring that all the services and that high level of technical expertise that, you know, none of us, you know, know, because that isn't our background, you know, to really be able to guide us, you know, in, in, you know, in the engagement that we have with Lyric.
Okay. And the, and the change in your contract, is that, is that, I just wasn't clear, is that kind of swapping disability for life or?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, got it. Okay, that's all I have.
Are there any other additional comments or questions about business items one through 15?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I'm going to be voting no on item number nine. And I'd like it just put in the record. I'm concerned about our expenses. And I'm looking to cut back on a lot of expenses. And while racial equity is a huge priority in our country, our state and our schools right now, this is not something I'm looking forward to moving. I'm not planning on moving forward with at this time as I think we have a commitment to our community to acknowledge our budget increases. And this is an item that we can pass on this year.
Right, so we can put forward a vote. Is there a motion to approve items one through eight and 10 through 15?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? Is there a motion to approve item nine?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All against? And no extensions? Right? We'll move on to the placement of CSC and CPSE. Are there any questions or concerns about these placements? Is there a motion to approve the placement and services for CSC and CPSE?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? And now we have, item C is the resolution for Hastings. It's resolved that upon their recommendation, I'll accept the resolution for participation in high-risk sports and the resolution is printed within the content of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve this resolution for participation in high-risk sports?
So moved.
A second, I saw Jeremy Gallant.
Second.
All in favor? And that's all? Thank you. So now, under Personnel, there are three appointments. Are there any questions or thoughts about these appointments? Is there a motion to approve the three appointments?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Under B, we have, we have, I'm sorry, I'm looking at one amendment or there are three, but one attachment, I see. Three amended, three amendments. Is there a motion to approve these three amendments? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Under Leaves of Absence, there are three listed. Are there any questions or thoughts about these leaves? Is there a motion to approve these three leaves of absence?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? We have two resignations this evening. Are there any questions or thoughts about these resignations? Is there a motion to approve the resignation?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was unmuting Lauren to give a-
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think while we're about to vote on the resignations, we could have allowed the resigning teacher to read her letter. And we should have allowed her letter to be posted in our board. And I know that is not the consensus of the entity of the Board of Trustees. But I think we have missed on a consistency and we could have both heard from her or allowed her letter to be posted. And I'm prepared to vote on that now.
Is there a motion to approve the two resignations this evening?
So moved.
And a second, I see Doug. All in favor? And now we are very fortunate to have a tenure recommendation this evening for Ms. Gina Marie Bellavia, a special education teacher at the middle school. Dr. Henning Piedmont, would you like to say anything?
Actually, I'm going to turn that over to either Ms. Laura Sullivan or Ms. Jennifer Spirelli, who did, are making the recommendation as, on the basis of their knowledge of Gina as an excellent educator. In the, during the time of her probationary status, she's demonstrated that, you know, she is the kind of educator we want to, you know, to bring in and offer tenure to. She's earned, you know, that, you know, that sort of right. And Ms. Sullivan is going to share some of the reasons why.
Thank you. Thank you. And Gina, thank you for hanging in there tonight with us. I know you're still on and I hope your family is as well. We're thrilled to recommend you for tenure this evening. Gina comes with a, a unique certification, which is five through nine. The New York State changed a lot of certifications, so five through nine happens to be a great one. And she also is working towards her extension certification, which will bring her certified in students with disabilities seven through 12, which is always a, a great asset. Gina immerses herself in professional development, which is endless when we actually sat down and learned of all the things that she has done in her time here. And I just want to share one quote that was, that was emailed to me from a parent that I thought was really important and it kind of spoke a little bit about Gina. It says, "We want to especially thank Ms. Bellavia for all of her efforts at the beginning of the year to help our son get settled in and for her ongoing efforts in the resource room. For those early days, she was answering emails at all hours of the day to help us feel at ease." So I think she really, I know Jen and Kevin want to say things as well, but I think she does really make sure that she's working well with her families and her students and forming relationships and that's, you know, thank you very much for all the hard work that you're doing, Gina.
Thanks so much, Laura, for, for sharing that. And good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say a few words about Gina. As a new member to the Hastings community, Gina immediately welcomes me with open arms and I noticed her same demeanor and caringness and empathy for her students and other colleagues. She's a great co-teacher, she's a great collaborator, and as Ms. Sullivan shared, she, she is truly there for the students. I, too, have received many emails from parents saying, "Over the break, Ms. Bellavia is saying, you know, great job on his improvement on this quiz and connecting with students in a positive way," which is just so great and motivating for her students and parents and energizing too. She always has, had been a great contributor in our BLT meetings and participating in our culturally responsive sustaining framework. And just really appreciate her dedication as well as her participation in her SAC committee and helping support the cultural and environment of the school. So thrilled that you are receiving this tonight, Gina. Congratulations. And Mr. Hanlon, anything you want to add?
Yes, just very quickly, congratulations are definitely in order. And to see you both care and bring out the best of the students, both inside the classroom and then with all the extracurriculars that you do to really help spill the culture and community and everything that we want our students at Farragut to be experiencing. So congratulations and thanks again for all of your hard work.
Do we make a formal recommendation or do?
Is there, is there a motion from the board to approve the recommendation for tenure for Ms. Gina Marie Bellavia, a special education teacher at Farragut Middle School?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, Ms. Bellavia, well deserved. Our students are lucky to have you.
And we have her come on and say some words, usually in person, the tenures.
You're welcome to, Ms. Bellavia. I do know she is here and participating and her mother is joining her in the celebration. Not sure if she is camera ready, but I know she's here. She there? If you'd like to share some thoughts, we welcome it.
Hi, good evening. I just want to thank Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Spirelli and Mr. Hanlon for their super kind words. I'm like in tears over here. And my husband's like recording this so that my parents can see it. So just thank you. I am so honored and privileged to work in this district with your children. And I'm going to go to bed soon so that I can be bright and bushy-eyed for them in the morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll have a more formal celebration in August when everyone's back. So everyone who's being granted tenure this year will be invited to our, one of our board meetings in August when we're back in person. And then we'll have a more official celebration with cake and, you know, some other, you know, goodies for all of our tenure awardees. So thank you again, Gina. Congratulations. And here's to many, many successful years ahead where you do, you inspire many, many children and motivate them to do their best and to be their best. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It, it means the world to me. So thank you.
We now can move on to the approval of minutes. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes from the February 8, 2021 board meeting? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February 8, 2021 board meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Great. So now we get to enjoy the construction project update. I know that when I, I was happily surprised when I walked up to Hillside this morning to find so much activity going on and orange vested security or construction security officer guiding parents around the area. So that was quite a welcome sight to see. So I look forward to hearing more specifics, Maureen. Thank you.
Okay, no problem, Lauren. Melissa, do you want to share the presentation or I can share my screen?
You can share the screen. You should have access. Let me know and I'll pull it on.
Let me get back into, I gotta go to the view, the full view. Share my screen. Okay. Okay, everyone can see my screen, correct? I'm good? Okay, perfect. Okay, so tonight, again, like Lauren said, just wanted to provide a couple of pictures and just give you an update on what work occurred last week at Hillside. We were very happy that although even with the weather that, you know, the crews got on site and they started to work. So I'll share a couple pictures and details of the work that they did accomplish last week. So last week, the work that occurred was mostly again to kind of prepare the site as they begin to start the actual construction process. So there was a good amount of site clearing that included a removal of trees that were indicated in our site plan and stump removals, demolition of the wood deck area. That's in the front of Hillside. That is now going to be in the area in which the addition will be built. And the exterior stairwell on the side of Hillside that led out to that kind of lower sloping playground. They had to remove benches and tables and play equipment, things that, you know, we would, we were gonna reinstall at a later time. More importantly, a professional surveyor was out. They were able to lay out the footprint of the addition, marking all the elevation points. And this is so, you know, kind of to assist them in the of marking out and, you know, removing of rocks and just the overall site work. Installation of construction fences and the construction of the roadway. That is the, the way that the vehicles and the equipment come in and out of the site. They also needed to create a temporary walkway from the existing pool path because that, that area was impacted a bit. So they kind of rerouted that. So as Lauren had mentioned, when parents are coming up from the pool site, they're kind of redirected around now what is the the site of the work. And the electricians, which again is a very large part of the work, they began running their four inch piping from the existing main service area in the building, which has to actually run throughout the interior of the building to provide the hookup, which will eventually be in the new addition. So again, that's a very large job. And they've been, they've gotten a good jump on that work. So here's just a couple of photographs for those who may not have had enough the hillside since the work began. And you can see this was in the first few days, again, where this is part of the site. It's on the obviously the left side of the building. They of course had to remove all that decking and some of those other items, as I mentioned, and tree removals and stumps in order to kind of begin to prepare and get down to allow for the rock removal. Again, just some, this photograph is stretched a bit, but again, just to give you a sense, that's where the decking is. And as you can see in this picture, they're in the process of removing a fairly large stump on the property. A couple aerial shots, just to kind of give you a perspective. And you can see where that area in which they needed also to kind of level out the area that exists next to the building and getting to prepare the site and get the elevations for the beginning of the work. So I thought that was kind of a nice, interesting view there. And then on the right side of things, you can see the state, the main staging area for the construction is on the basketball court at Hillside. So as you can see in this picture, you know, there's a, as I mentioned, there's a road that kind of comes in off of the circle into that area to allow for construction vehicles and machinery. And just another kind of aerial picture of the site. On the left hand side of this picture, you can see as I, you know, we spoke about the pool path and kind of seeing how that needed to be diverted and kind of re. They had to create a compacted area in order for parents to be able to walk around the site. So we can, you can kind of see that marked out on the picture here. And again, just to give you a sense of the, you know, people who are familiar with that front decking area and kind of see where all of that has been removed. Again, this is just different shots. You know, we really appreciate their willingness to come up and, you know, with the, the snow and, you know, they really were still able to get a tremendous amount of work done. So on the right, you know, that was sort of the conditions that they first arrived in. As I mentioned, this is just kind of a picture and of this is that four inch piping that I spoke about. On the left, you can see now they're getting all their materials onto the site, of course. And the beginning of the work, you can see there on the right hand side. And as I mentioned, these, these pipes have to run the length of the building through the ceilings. And in a building that has a lot of twists and turns, it's pretty complicated. They've made some great progress and they've been working and they're going to continue that work second shift throughout, throughout the remainder until the work is done. So for this week, obviously continuation of some of the work that began last week. And this week, they hope to continue with the rock chipping and removal. They actually today, the delivery of the construction trailer, which is what they will be working out of it, allows for them to have kind of an area on site for all the contractors to be able to do some work inside when needed. The general contractor, that that's where the person who's overseeing the entire, the entirety of the work is, that's their office. And they did the temporary power hookup today to that. And that, that trailer will remain for the entirety of the construction. They brought in some additional gravel or they will be bringing in some additional gravel this week. Again, as I mentioned, that roadway to kind of protect as the, as the larger machinery is coming in and out of the site. And again, continuation of the electrical work. So, you know, they're, they're actually also going to be doing compaction tests to ensure the soils that are there and if they can use them. So, you know, we were happy that today was a big day, being that it was the first day now that they are on site and our students and our parents were there. So as Lauren, you had mentioned, I think, you know, we were trying to be, have some people out there directing some folks around so that they're kind of now understand kind of the new way to enter to the site. And we're actually, in speaking to the construction manager, we're very, very pleased with the work they did and especially considering the conditions in which they were working through. And they did, they had a tremendous amount of work done. So, you know, that makes us feel very optimistic about, about the progress that they'll make when the weather is more cooperative for them. So each week we'll be, you know, presenting and it will be able to kind of look at the photos and kind of see the progression of the work. So, you know, it's good. And we thank, you know, all the parents and everyone's patience as this work continues. So that concludes my presentation.
Maureen, just a quick question. The behind the work staging site, can people still walk up and down to the pool?
Yes, yes. So, so yes, it, the. They rerouted it a bit, but yes, that's still, that there's still access from the pool. It is have to, it's a little bit of a longer walk because now they have to kind of walk around also. Once they get up to the top of it, now there's a construction area. So it just is a little bit, you know, more roundabout in order to, you know, get, get to the front of the school.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Very impressive to see the work in progress, Maureen. So many hurrahs for all the efforts that have, you know, been invested in this long and hard fought effort. I know that many generations of Hillside students are going to benefit from this. But I know at least my fourth grader really appreciates the, seeing it all underway. It's very exciting for them. So thank you to you and all that your team of people who've been working on this for a long time. It's really great.
Thank you. Yes, we're all very excited. And yes, it's, I'm glad that your subtle, see, you know, I think it'll be interesting. I think the kids, I know Amy, you know, kind of had discussed with teachers, make, you know, kind of speaking to the students about it. So it's kind of like a little, it's kind of cool to, although I'm first, sometimes it'll be a little bit loud. Kind of, you know, speaking about it and they can kind of see the work in progress, which is pretty interesting.
Thank you, Maureen. I think I do know that Amy and John and Joe Materano sent a note out to all Hillside families, informing them of the, the activity and to be mindful of the new walkways. So, you know, I think it's obvious, but I think it will be exciting for students, current students to see what's going on. I know when I taught in the city, I had a classroom and they were doing construction on Laker Street right below me. And it became part of what the kids observed every day to see the progress of what was happening outside. And we actually went down to the street and interviewed the construction workers at one point to find out exactly what tools they were using. And these are kindergartners, of course. So, you know, it can be part of something big, particularly in the spring, to get kids excited about the development of their school. Something that they can be invested in. So thank you for all that your team was doing, particularly during our winter recess. Your team was still working, full steam ahead. So thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Now, I appreciate that. And you're right. I think it will be part, I think that's the plan. Amy had said that, you know, to kind of get the kids engaged in it. And yeah, that's a great idea about maybe interviewing them. That sounds like a great, you know, I'll mention that to Amy if she hasn't thought of it already.
Their BLT, I think, started exploring it at the end of last year. So I'm not sure where it is right at this moment. But yeah, it's, it's a great, it's a great opportunity.
Yes, thank you, Maureen and Joe and everyone who's involved, Amy and John, now join the, the owner architects, the OCAM meetings. So, you know, they are there so that they can know. Today, Maureen, Melissa and I had our, one of our meetings or once a month meeting with the CSCE. And, you know, one of the conversations had to do with, you know, some questions that some of our faculty and staff are asking. So it's really important that, you know, this information is made available to everyone. They were asking some of those same questions, you know, about, you know, where, you know, is, will parking be impacted? You know, are there certain entrances and exits that we, you know, can't go through? So we'll be doing a lot of, you know, informational sessions so that, you know, people are informed. And as I said, you know, they feel very comfortable asking. And, and, you know, the president and vice president of the CSCE, I mentioned them since we, we met with them today, you know, are, you know, really doing, you know, a great job at communicating, you know, what is happening and answering questions, you know, so that just everyone feels that they're, they're in the know about what's occurring and, and that, you know, similar, you know, in support of what Ms. Mansky just mentioned. They're not two people who are more able to integrate the construction project into the learning environment than Amy and John and that in all of the professionals there. So it'll be very exciting to see the artwork, to see, you know, you know, what a career day looks like, you know, during a construction project, you know, all that talent in, you know, it's, you know, they're the kind of people, you know, who, you know, we don't get an opportunity to meet unless you have a construction project. So it's a great, a great time to, to tap into their expertise and have them, you know, engaged in something that doesn't take them off task, obviously, but would be really exciting for students to see and hear and learn how these, you know, how someone becomes an architect or becomes a, you know, a tradesperson in some of these very complex, you know, trades that are, that, that come together to create that. So thank you again, Maureen. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, everyone, our construction manager. And most of all, the Board of Education for, you know, supporting this from the outset and making it possible. So, you know, your fingerprints, you may not physically be there, but your fingerprints are all over why this is even possible. So thank you again.
Yes, and I just wanted to also mention that they are doing their first fire drill at Hillside tomorrow because anytime you change the exits or, you know, obviously the, with the construction site, it does change. So we, we thank the fire chief, Chief Linder, who was, you know, was involved in the discussion leading up to the need to have another fire drill. So the fire drill, I believe, is scheduled for tomorrow. And I know Chief Linder was, somebody had mentioned to me that they had spoken to him. He was on site today. So we appreciate, you know, just to make sure, of course, safety is always first. We're not required to do it. But we wanted to make sure everyone with the changing of having the construction site there, making sure everyone felt comfortable in exiting the building. So we do have that scheduled for tomorrow as well.
Thank you, Maureen, and thank you for being with us tonight. We have the proposed 2021, 2022 school calendar. This was drafted. There was a change made since the last draft that the board had on their last previous agenda. And that is a change that was, that makes the spring break, the April break, a full week as opposed to broken days off. So if the board wants to review the proposed calendar and if they have any questions or comments about it.
I know people usually have questions about whether we start before or after Labor Day. So I wonder if you could just address why the decision was made to put the start of school where it is.
So the, the, the calendar is constructed using a template provided by Putnam, Northern Westchester BOC. So all the regions that subscribe to particular BOCs use that model to, as a beginning of the construct for their own district calendar. So the, the thinking was, you know, because we, you know, we're starting, you know, in terms of the superintendent's conference days at the end of August, which has, you know, been a tradition. And we have some other dates, you know, that, you know, holidays in September, it would make sense to open on September 1st rather than to delay the start of the school year. So it's about getting in as soon as possible and not waiting until, let's say, you know, and, you know, actually, we would have to wait until the ninth if we didn't start on September 1st. So in our, you know, you know, as the groups met and looked at this, we felt that it was in everyone's best interest, interest to get children back in on, on September 1st rather than waiting until later. And different districts do different things, but that was what we felt made the most sense.
Are there any other thoughts or questions about the proposed calendar for next school year?
Mine is just a slight question. I was just wondering how the decision was made to have the recognized Hindu holiday be holy, which falls in March versus the volley, which is generally more, a more broadly celebrated or observed holidays, as is my understanding and the Hindu tradition. But I know that also falls, falls in a very busy month in November because the volley is November 4th for the fall. And, and obviously holy falls in March, which is a less busy month. So I just wanted to know if it reflected that. Thank you.
Sure. So since, you know, recognizing the holidays are new for us, we really have no models for, you know, this particular holiday in particular, we do have models for, you know, the, for Chinese Lunar New Year, which is recognized in New York City. It's not necessarily, one of the holidays is traditionally recognized in, in the Westchester area, although there are districts that are now, you know, adding the Lunar New Year as a recognized holiday. The, the, the May 3rd Itar Firt holiday as well as the July 10th Irat Altha are. The July 10th Eid Al Ta are are placed or listed on the calendar because they are holidays that appear on the calendar. In Yonkers as well as New York City. And I believe it may also be. New, not New Rochelle, but maybe Mount Vernon. So there are just a few holidays that that do appear on in Westchester. So as I said, there are not a lot of models. We haven't gotten any feedback about changing that. You know, Justin, you know, as I said, there was just very few examples in this in the state where these are holidays that actually appear on any in on any calendars. And since we don't have, you know, any feedback about the March 18th Festival of Colors. And as opposed to, as you said, your recommendation of moving it to November. I'm happy to do, you know, either of those things, but we just didn't have any models to to use and just sort of went with, you know, at least, you know, one of the holidays that is also of equal importance as we look at them, you know, celebrated across the country.
It appears that that holy is not a day where school is not in session. Is that right? So schools in session.
Right, I think it's session. Right.
Okay. But recognizing the volley is what you're saying is it's a suggestion.
I'm just saying it's like a more universally recognized and celebrated holiday in the in the Hindu tradition. If the effort is trying to be made to recognize a religion, I mean, a holiday from a different religious context. I think the volley, my understanding is is that it's more broadly celebrated in the Hindu and South Asian diaspora versus holy. But I am not a Hindu, so I'm married to a Hindu, but I don't pretend to speak on behalf of the community. But if you look at New York City's, while the volley is not recognized in the school calendar in terms of kind of adjacent to that, the parking holidays. The volley is recognized and holy is not.
Okay.
So.
So we can certainly, you know, in the spirit in which the calendar was developed, which was to be, you know, inclusive. It that it certainly is, it certainly makes sense to include it in November as a as one of the holidays or observances. But it isn't a day off, so we can certainly include that.
Right, I was just suggesting in lieu of holy to 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 have the volley in there, but that's just a suggestion, not.
Okay, and it probably doesn't hurt to have both, since it is just a matter of noting them rather than, you know, as I said, having them being seen as a day off. And the the other sort of important part of this is that some point, you know, I think it'd be important for, you know, for us to. You know, understand, you know, what these observances mean so that we're educating the community and rather than them being here, some people do know. But, you know, it's a great learning opportunity as well in terms of truly celebrating the, you know, the the layer, the layers of diversity. You know, across cultures and religions and, you know, practices. So that's the other sort of exciting part of having these here is that it gives us all an opportunity to to learn. And to understand and to, you know, appreciate, you know, what it means to to be in a community where there, you know, people who who observe these various holidays and observances. And we'll look at it once again, just to make sure again that we're we reflected everything that has been brought to our attention. Most importantly, you know, you know, every, you know, all the days that, you know, we're required to have are here. You know, we look at that multiple times through multiple lens and there's, you know, we, you know, you know, taken all the feedback about, you know, various things. And certainly we've gotten some favorable feedback about the change around the April spring break in 2022.
Yeah, I'd like to point out a couple of things that I'd like maybe the administration to take another look at as it is a draft proposal. First off, I'd like to make a note, the Irvington proposed calendar that was forwarded, note was forwarded to all of us. That we were able to look at about two weeks ago. Irvington does have a calendar proposal that starts after Labor Day. Usually, I know the River towns, they coordinate and look into each other's ideas and priorities. So my next couple of ideas are all based on the idea that starting after Labor Day. Is a Northeast tradition. That I think we should consider holding on to. And one of the ways we can do that. Is this calendar really shows the imbalance towards Jewish holidays. That I think our school district has always tried to. Be supportive of. I believe I'm not going to be off by much, but I believe our community is about 20% Jewish. Which is why typically we've prioritized Jewish holidays over. Muslim holidays like Eid al-Fitr. But. I think this calendar, as you were pointing out, starting after the maybe the Thursday, the ninth might feel a little bit. Maybe a little bit late in September. I'd like just to make sure that the other board members are aware of this. A majority of school districts in New York do not take off for Rosh Hashanah. My family is Jewish. I think these holidays were originally put in place because of teacher shortages. Teachers were a large proportion of the Jew Jewish teachers were a large proportion of the New York City population. And you had issues where if you went to school on a Jewish holiday, you would have teacher shortages. I don't think our teacher population. Is as heavily Jewish as our community is. So one day in particular, I think this board and this administration can consider the second day of Rosh Hashanah. Is possibly another day where we could make it a white square. We could note it on our calendar. But that should be a day that we consider not whether or not we need to not have school. I don't believe we have a large enough percentage of. Jewish teachers who would be taking that day absent. And if we don't have a teacher shortage, we can start school and still be respectful of other people's religions and cultures. That would still leave the first day of Rosh Hashanah and the more holy day, which is Yom Kippur. By considering changes like this, we can actually look into trying to follow. The stay after Labor Day tradition. Two other holidays would have to be changed on this draft. I would apply the same sort of reasoning towards the Muslim holiday, May 3rd, one of the festivals as the month of Eid ends. I think that should also be, we should consider making that a white square. I don't believe we have a large proportion of teachers who would be taking that day off. I think that would be easy to look into whether they've been taking it off. And we have families that can choose to celebrate it by not coming to school, or they can choose to celebrate it with the evening celebrations. The third holiday that we should consider, I hope that the administration considers would be Juneteenth. I don't think we have a large proportion of teachers who would want to take that day off to celebrate Juneteenth. And then we could also consider making that a white square. So we would be being showing an inclusive calendar just by putting in holidays. That are part of our community, but do not cause us to have to close school. I work in Yonkers. My school is 20% Arabic. Which is why we might find some holidays in the Yonkers calendar that don't match up with the Hastings calendar. That 20% Arabic is not all Muslim. We have a large Jordanian Christian community in our Westchester County. But there are certainly holidays that New York City and Yonkers appropriately prioritize based on their population. I think there's a lot of benefits to keeping the summer month, even though summer goes into September. The school calendar idea of starting after Labor Day. Especially when we're adding two holidays here that are not a significant teacher shortage absence. And if we need a third day, I would certainly. Propose taking a look at the second day of Rosh Hashanah. Three Jewish holidays based on our community. We have a small conservative Jewish population in our town. That second day could be a day that families make their own decision whether they come to school or not. But I believe we'll have the teachers and the staff to support opening school on Wednesday, the 8th. Obviously, if any other board members have any comments, I'd be interested in seeing if there's. Any other people who would favor something like that to be a focus of a proposed calendar.
Just one thing about what's a requirement. So. Juneteenth is a New York State recognized day, holiday, similar to. Veterans Day and the other holidays that are, you know, the ones that are given, you know, and are not, you know, at our discretion. So Juneteenth was added by the state of New York this year. Last year it wasn't. It was, I believe it was state employees took that date. But this year, the mandate from the state is that that is recognized on the calendar as an official holiday. So that one is not one that we could change. It was be similar to us deciding not to, you know, choose one of the other holidays that are traditional.
Did Cuomo make that for state employees?
It's for it's for it's for school districts as well. Last year, when it started, it was only for state employees. This year, it's it's now a recognized holiday that schools are closed.
Because I see that New York City added it as a school holiday. And that Cuomo made it a holiday for state employees. So maybe I'll look into that there. If you sound pretty confident that that's what it was, but it looked like New York City added it this upcoming for 2021. Okay.
Well, only because this is a collaborative effort with the region. So the, you know, the superintendents from across Westchester do talk about these dates. And it's pretty, you know, it's pretty clear that Juneteenth is recognized as a state holiday. And as you look at, I mean, there are lots of holidays, you know, that, you know, are that take place in different states that we don't recognize and vice versa. But certainly, that's one of the ones that we we don't have the discretion to say that we won't recognize. In terms of, you know, similar to Rosh Hashanah, you know, it is again, regionally, the practice that districts have take both of those dates. So you'll find this date on the Southern Westchester BOCs calendar that we follow. And you'll find that in, you know, in 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 the Westchester area. So that wouldn't be in consistent with the practice that we all follow around these holidays. And, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily look at a percentage, you know, and say it's going to be this or not that. That isn't what our calendar group does when we meet. We look at, you know, practices across the region and also look at changes and. And opportunities to be more inclusive. So it's so that's sort of the more larger overarching goal. And and introduce. Not only our student body, but our, you know, faculty and staff to. Some of, you know, the practices and observances of others who reside in the community as well as who work in the school district. So, you know, this is consistent with what's currently, you know, happening with the exception of us, as I said, of the of the Islamic holidays that are new to the to our calendar. We we do have the time, so we can make a decision to use the time to be more inclusive. Or we could make a decision to go back to what we used to do because of. You know, the the lack of presence of certain people in the community. So it was universal across the bargaining units that that this was the way to go. Before bargaining units who met to plan this, you know, and participated in the discussion about the calendar. Everyone embraced the idea that this would be, this is a good practice, you know, to. Make it known that we appreciate and 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 respect and honor other observances in the community.
Yeah, I was. Going to thank you for adding some of these new holidays. And I have seen. In in certain years in the past. When Rosh Hashanah winds up early, I have seen schools start before Labor Day. Doesn't happen often, but I but I have seen it before. But I was going to thank you for adding some of these new holidays because I know a lot of people in the community have have asked about it, especially some of the Muslim holidays. And and I know New York City has gone to that. And I do think it does, if we have the ability to do it, I do think, you know, it makes people feel included. There are two things, I mean, these, I'll just throw these out as as just thoughts. Not to be acting on or anything, but, you know, if if we're really thinking about the calendar as, as, you know, not for next year. But I I think February break is sort of silly. Personally, I would love to move to a long break in March. And this, you know, I don't know what parents are able to take off a week, a month after Christmas break. And then Martin Luther King Weekend. And now there's a another break in February, now another break in in April. I know there are some areas not in New York that do it in March and they don't even have a February break. And then. To Jeremy's point about the last day of Rosh Hashanah, we had the discussion last year. And I I tend to agree, to be honest. I don't know if I have to caveat that I'm Jewish myself. But it actually bothers me a little bit that on the second day, when we used to take the train into New York City, there were, most of the Jewish people that I know were on the train going to work. And and we had the day off. And my sister's community in Connecticut takes one day off. And I know we do that in in Westchester. I know that people have fought for these days. And I'm not saying that we should make any changes. But I I do think that is one holiday that very few people take that second day. And and if, and if, you know, there are some people that want to take it, you know, you know, they can do the same, the same thing that people have done that. For holidays that that aren't recognized. And I know that is, you know, somewhat controversial or some people, you know, would be upset about that. But it's it's not saying we're not recognizing Rosh Hashanah. It's saying we're not recognizing two days of a holiday, which most people celebrate for one day. Although some people do celebrate the the two days. But I I do appreciate the the more inclusiveness of the the calendar. I I know some people would love to have, you know, the sort of start after Labor Day. It's one of these things that, you know, it happens sometimes. I loved last year when we had two full weeks of Christmas vacation. Next year, we have like six days. So. You know, in a couple more years, there'll be another 10-day Christmas vacation. So I don't think that we should necessarily start taking out holidays just just to try to figure out how we can start after Labor Day. It is just one of those things. But. I know we talked about the second day of Rosh Hashanah, you know. I I know it was somewhat, you know, some decent pushback last year. But I, you know, I'll just throw it out there as I think there is. I personally don't see it as a slap in the face to the Jewish community to to celebrate one day of Rosh Hashanah. They do it in a lot of other communities and and people are perfectly happy with that one day off.
I think, you know, I think it says volumes that the bargaining units have endorsed the holidays. I think, you know, I think it says volumes that the bargaining units have endorsed the holidays and are comfortable with the proposed calendar. You know, I think it's unfortunate that the way the holidays are falling makes it challenging to consider waiting until after Labor Day. I, you know, I, we did talk about this last year and we talked about it the year prior about the two days of Rosh Hashanah. And I, I think on previous years I've stated that, you know, I've, I grew up in an area where I was a religious minority and had to have my parents send in a note so that I could be absent from school. And, you know, I, I think that it says volumes when kids have to do that, or when employees have to use time to, to be absent. I think it, it also invites people into be a part of the community that aren't in the community. If they see that our district is honoring certain celebrations or observances. So it, it, in essence, makes us more welcoming to have more inclusion. So I, I personally right, right now, don't feel like it would be appropriate to retract certain holidays from the proposed calendar, mainly because of the endorsement of the bargaining units. And I do, I agree that it's unfortunate that it makes it challenging to begin, you know, after Labor Day, but you know, I guess, I, I guess Labor Day hasn't had that much weight for me personally. And I guess that's my own bias, but you know, I understand. And I, I do know that also summer programming ends. So it's, it's not as if families have opportunity for, for their kids. It's challenging in those last weeks of August, that last week of August to find opportunities for, for care occupation of your kids. So, you know, starting as soon as we're able, I think is, you know, I, I'd feel comfortable. So the timeline Valerie is for us to see it again at the next board meeting and to consider voting on it at that point. Okay. So I guess if board members have, if board members have additional concerns or questions about the calendar, or if community members do, they can get in touch with, get in touch with you, Valerie.
Yes, that'll be fine.
So we now have the second public comment. We invite the public to make comment on any district business. At this public comment period, your comments are limited to two minutes. If you can please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen and Ms. Deliberar will call on you to speak to Board of Education. Please state your name and if you're a resident of Hastings. Thank you.
We don't appear to have anybody who wants to comment.
Thank you, Melissa. Do any board members have comment this evening? Well, before closing, I just want to say, I know Sophia commented or Sabine, I can't recall which unfortunately, and I'm sorry that students are starting to consider their courses for next year. And I know that kindergarten registration is open and there's a meeting this week for rising ninth graders. And there's a lot of, even though it still feels like the dead of winter change is starting to be in the air. So it makes me feel optimistic, particularly with, you know, the construction project and all that's before us and the new reopening committee convening next week. So I just want to say thank you to my board colleagues and to Maureen and Melissa and Melissa and Valerie. Thank you for all the work you're doing for the district.
Sorry, Lauren. I did, I did want to make a comment there. Just for the record, I believe our prior meeting, the board represented an opinion that was not accurate. And I wanted to put that out there just in case. I know we don't have a lot of listeners. But at our prior meeting, we were going to be voting on a split spending plan. And then at the, within the last weeks, we started trying to figure out whether we had been following, the administration had been following an appropriate path forward. The board was represented by our words implied that everything we had been doing was okay and that we could have gone forward. But we have seen in recent emails from our council that that was possibly a misrepresentation. And based on the emails that I've read, it was it was not accurate, some of the statements that we have made. We were wise to push off voting on that. And I don't believe we stated it correctly. When we were talking about that we could have gone forward, our council's advice was not that clear and we might have misrepresented that to the public. Specifically trying to vote on part one of a spending bill and how we represented that in our opening comments.
Could I speak to that? So the issue had to do with two different proposals from one company. And what council recommended that we do, because it did appear as though by having the first proposal, which was the, the profile of a graduate, it wasn't the strategic planning portion of the, of the work that the Telfa Kids would be able to do. So it was one portion of the work. Not every district engages in the development of a portrait of a graduate, but that is a, a practice that makes the most sense to develop sort of the, the learner dispositions and competencies to identify those first and then to go into the strategic planning process. So we followed our district policy with regards to putting forth a proposal, you know, given the dollar amount, which didn't require an, an RFP. The second part of the work had not started and there was no RFP issued for it because there was not even a proposal put forth to the board. Not even planned for that board meeting. So there was no propriety, impropriety related to the second proposal, because there was no second proposal. What council recommended that we do to make it clear was that we were not as a beta complete, you know, going to go with the Telfa Kids. So the way that we presented it looked as though we were making a decision to go with the Telfa Kids for the strategic planning process, which we were, but the part that council suggested that we change so that we were not, you know, indicating to the public that we somehow had already made a decision, you know, without an RFP to go forward with using the Telfa for the strategic planning part of it. So there was no impropriety, Mr. Galan. Yeah, we were following district policy and, you know, Maureen could speak to this better than anyone because, you know, in her capacity, we are, you know, the, you know, one of the primary considerations is to make sure that we do follow, you know, our purchasing agreements and, you know, all the steps that we need to take. But, you know, this may be new, you know, in terms of looking at a process in this fashion, looking at one part, which is, you know, also supported by that company and looking at the second part that would also be supported by that company. But we hadn't gotten to that part yet and hadn't issued an RFP, which doesn't suggest at all that we were doing something untoward or that we were violating our policy. So I do resent the, I guess, the position that somehow we, you know, I, since I made the statement, I have misrepresented the proposal because that simply isn't true.
Thank you. Let me clarify. I was speaking how the board spoke, not how you spoke, although you are a member of the board. You are definitely the executive and you're part of this board, but I was speaking on how the voting members of the board, the Board of Trustees represented it. The Board of Trustees represented that we were given advice from council that we could have continued how we were doing it. And we have seen in recent emails regarding that, that that was not as clearly expressed by our council. So I'm not speaking to how the administration spoke on that. I wanted to make it clear that I believe the Board of Trustees overrepresented how our council had guided us as to whether or not we could have continued with that RFP and whether it would have been defendable and whether it was all over the top, clear and ready to go, and that we were being conservative in pulling back. The emails that I have seen did not state that opinion after we further clarified from council what was said. But definitely I'm speaking to the Board of Trustees that I felt that we needed to clear that up. I am happy that we put off that over $25,000 spending that was going to be split into two RFPs. I believe it would have been difficult to defend that idea going forward with one company for the first part and then putting out an RFP for some other second company to jump on board to some consulting company's plan to finish it off. It was one larger item that we had about a week's heads up from a resident to consider whether or not it was. I don't know if we use the term 100% above board, but we represented it as if the Board of Trustees knew that this was council's opinion that we should or could or would have been able to defend it. I have read the emails. I don't believe we accurately represented the opinions that our council was sharing with our administration that was being passed on to our Board of Trustees. I am glad we did not vote on a $24,900 RFP with the expectation that a second RFP could have gone to some other company who would have jumped in on that. And I believe we oversold it because of a little bit of confusion and misrepresentation.
Jeremy, I believe that, Jeremy Galland, I believe that Valerie has clarified it and the Board of Education did not make action on that item that you're speaking about. So therefore we, we did not come, we did not propose anything to the public. There was no motion to move forward with that, with that particular proposal. So the board did not act. You know, there were individuals on the board. I, I am one of them that was, I personally, as, as an individual, was speaking on behalf of moving forward with that proposal. But the board did not take action or act in any way with any impropriety. I, I personally was, had reviewed the information that, of, of the proposal, the, the amount, the recommendation from Maureen in the business office that it met our policy requirements. And it appeared on our agenda, the fact that the board as a body decided not to vote on it, that, that's what occurred, but the board did not act with any impropriety.
I, I think we had already taken it off the agenda by the time the, the meeting occurred, right? We had already had removed it. So I think it was on our initial draft. And again, that's because of, again, understanding that, you know, later on, we didn't want it to be questioned if in fact, you know, we went with the second part of the work. So based on that. And that, that was just saying that, you know, we were adhering to the, our policy in terms of the 25,000. And really the other piece would have had to been part of our budget, which was not approved. So we didn't even, you know, really know definitively, but we then said, you know what? It does make sense. Let's pull it back. We'll do an RFP. So it actually was already removed off the agenda that evening. It wasn't even there for you guys to vote on. So we, we, I think, you know, again, there's, it's sort of this, you know, obviously there's an agreement that, wow, you know, it does probably be cleaner, you know, in the grand scheme of things, but in terms of the first part did not violate our, you know, our policy. So that, that was why it was originally there. But then of course, we did do that analysis and that's why we didn't even have it on there that evening because we felt, you know, we had the time to issue that RFP if that's the direction we were going to go in, you know, just so that there would be no challenges later because certainly we wouldn't want ever to get into a situation like that, if that were to be, you know, challengeable later. So but I think that's what we spoke to, that technically we, we were not, I mean, we were not volley, violating our board policy, but you know, in looking at things, and that's why we do have a draft agenda and it's not unusual if something comes up that we may say, okay, we're gonna, you know, do, you know, let's, let's go and, and in thinking about it from that perspective, we're going to like, you know, change up what we initially thought. So I think that's what was the plan that evening anyway. I mean, we already didn't have it there. So.
Minor Maureen, it was tabled entirely and the proposal wasn't on it. So the board as a body did not act in any way with impropriety was not.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying the board acted with impropriety. I'm saying our opening comments, which reflect the opinions of the board entity, not our actions not to vote on it since it wasn't on there. Our opening comments expressed an opinion that this sort of thing was okay. And our council has written to us that that wasn't accurate. That putting an RFP out there for $24,900 with the expectation that there'd be another one following up on it was not something that was completely defendable. And I'm happy that we did not act on it. But we left the impression that that was something we would do in the future or that was okay to do, or that was completely okay in this case. And I think it's a small issue, but it can be cleared up that that was not the opinion that our council had shared with us. Putting out a 24, nine RFP when we were already locking into something larger or not locking into it is not clearly recommended by our council. Our opening comments were overly supportive that it was all okay. And I don't believe that's what we have read, Lauren.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts, Jeremy. The minutes from that board meeting are available. Is there a motion to close the Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? Once again, thank you everyone for this evening and for all you're doing for the district.
Thank you.